I think we're all here. I am going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Laura Lee, if you would please call the roll. Reminder to say your name and then here, I know we had one in-person meeting. Now we're back to virtual. So Laura Lee, please.
Paul Banks.
Paul Banks here.
Stu Boyd.
Stu Boyd here.
Pam Howard.
Pam Howard here.
Lori Visda Ward.
Lori Visda Ward here.
Dawn Kirk.
Dawn Kirk here.
Barbara Cruz.
Barbara Cruz here.
Mark Sutter.
Mark Sutter here.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to go right to, we'll do the pledge and the mission statement when we go back. When we come back from executive session, but right now I will entertain a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute, Section 24-6-402, Section 4F. I think that's a one for the reporting of teacher discipline pursuant to policy GCQF. So I need a motion and a second for that, please.
Barbara Cruz, so move.
Thank you.
Dawn Kirk, second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Barb Cruz and a second from Dawn Kirk to move into executive session for the purpose just stated. Are there any questions? Hearing none, Laura Lee, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks.
Paul Banks, aye.
Stu Boyd.
Stu Boyd, aye.
Pam Howard.
Did she pop off? She might have popped off.
I bet she did.
Lori Visda Ward.
Aye, Lori Visda Ward, aye, sorry.
Dawn Kirk.
Dawn Kirk, aye, and Pam's coming back online.
I'm back! Sorry about that. Pam Howard, aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Barbara Cruz, aye.
Mark Sutter.
Mark Sutter, aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous to move into executive session. We will go into there. We'll come back here. So two things, we're bringing Dr. Schaefer and Bill Sebers, those the only two? Okay, so they'll be joining us in executive session. Board, Matt put up the instructions for joining executive session. Make sure you leave this meeting before you join the other one, so we don't have sound looping issues. Deal? So I'll see you all over there in a couple. Hello again. I want to make sure we're all back. Yeah, okay, it looks like we're all back. We are returning from executive session. Executive session was adjourned. We did not take any action in executive session. We will now rejoin the regular meeting. I'm assuming we are streaming. Is that correct, Matt Kuhn? Yes? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I always forget what little icons I'm supposed to look for all the time. Okay, so we are back. We are streaming. We are called to order. We've had roll call. Next up will be pledge of allegiance. Mark Sutter, if you will lead us in the pledge. And Matt, do you have a flag for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the mission statement. Pam, if you would read the mission statement for us, please.
Sorry, I'm having issues tonight. One of those nights, I guess. Just not, not happening. Okay. Actually, um.
Have you got it?
I don't have it pulled up, so if somebody else can grab it, I'm just.
Do you have it, Dawn? Dawn, do you have it? Dawn has it. She'll take it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our mission statement is that the Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thanks, Dawn. All right. Next is the adoption of the agenda for tonight as presented. I will entertain a motion for, I've got a motion from Dawn, and I need a second. I have a second for Mark Sutter. So a motion from Dawn Kirk, second from Mark Sutter, to adopt the agenda as presented. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, Laura Lee, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks.
Paul Banks, aye.
Stu Boyd.
Stu Boyd, aye.
Pam Howard.
Pam Howard, aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Lori Visda Ward, aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Dawn Kirk, aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Barbara Cruz, aye.
Mark Sutter.
Mark Sutter, aye.
Thank you. And the agenda is unanimously adopted. Next is the approval of minutes from the August 5th, 2020 meeting, and I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve those minutes. You could just raise your hand if that's easier. Okay, got a motion from Dawn Kirk and a second from Pam Howard to approve the minutes for August 5th. Are there any changes, corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing nothing, Laura Lee, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks.
Paul Banks, aye.
Stu Boyd.
Stu Boyd, aye.
Pam Howard.
Pam Howard, aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Lori Visda Ward, aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Dawn Kirk, aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Barbara Cruz, aye.
Mark Sutter.
Mark Sutter, aye.
Thank you. And the minutes are unanimously approved. Next is the public participation, public participation portion of the meeting. We do have superintendent's report, but before that, board, we do have a number of public comment tonight after board report, so I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up on that. We have those recorded. But we will first go to Dr. Schaefer for superintendent's report.
So good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, I am going to share my screen with you because I'm going to take you on a tour of some of the great things that are happening as our staff are preparing to welcome back students in the coming days. So let me get this up in view, present, and can we see my screen? Okay, so, very good. So what I want, our staff has been busily involved with professional development, and for the next two weeks will be planning in their classrooms, working in teams, department meetings, staff meetings, really just gearing up for the launch of the school year. So asked a number of principals to share some images from their schools, and so here we go. The first slide is our friends at Turner Middle School, and you can see teachers collaborating, working in departments, working in classrooms, getting ready. So this is from Turner. And then this is a split screen on, I guess that would be your left would be High Plains, and they were doing Chromebook pickup today. And so those are a station that they have set up. And then on the right side will be an example of a virtual meeting, and that was taking place at Mary Blair Elementary School. So you can see kind of what a virtual meeting could look like. I know we're used to that now with our board meetings, but that's what it looks like at one of the virtual meetings at Mary Blair. Mountain View High School sent these two pictures in. One of the pictures is they did some team building upon return, so they were outside and just doing some staff team building. Looks like there's a soccer ball. It looks like someone's holding a trophy there, but just a way to build some, some positive spirit and camaraderie as staff also returned from their summer vacations. And on the right, also from Mountain View High School, looks like they're, they're looking at some data and working as a, as a team there. Again, socially distanced, but doing some planning and coordination for the launch of the school year. Conrad Ball is on your left this time, and you can see that would be an example of almost a full staff meeting. So I know on our screens, we might have 12 or so. This is an example of when you have 40 or 50 or so images. You can see in the background, it looks like they're in the gym, and you've got some people that are working on the floor in the gym, some are in their classrooms. Obviously, when you have virtual, you have the flexibility of locating in different areas, but still being able to meet. On the right, the images are from Centennial Elementary. Those are just from a couple of classrooms. I want to say second grade and fourth grade, and just some materials and supplies and some things that teachers are doing in their individual classrooms to get ready. Winona Elementary sent these. They are excited to welcome their class of 2028, believe it or not. So they're pointing to that banner in their hallway, and then you see a teacher, it looks like she is working on, I'm going to say math, but it could easily be literacy as well, but you can see she's working in her classroom. Coyote Ridge, again, some teachers just getting their classroom set up as well. Many may be asking, well, if we're, if we're going virtual, why, why set up classrooms? Couple reasons. First, a lot of teachers will be working in their classrooms, and so a lot of them will be operating from their classrooms, even though they're going to be meeting with their students virtually. And secondly, we are looking, you know, when we're, when we're able to, to relaunch in person. And so if and when, you know, it becomes, you know, it's safe to do so, you know, we will welcome back those students that have elected an in-person instructional experience. So that work is certainly taking place as well. The next set of pictures, we had, starting today, Chromebook pickup or technology pickup. These are pictures from Turner Middle School, and you can see just how the different stations were set up, and cars literally drove up, and they were greeted by a staff member, and Chromebooks were checked out. This was at Conrad Ball Middle School. Again, you can see the stations set up and cars on the left. Again, you can see the stations set up, and cars on the left were, were queuing up, and they would drive through very efficient. And then finally, here's Loveland High School. Again, even at our high schools, it looks like there's, there's two lines, two stations, and it worked really well. So, the extra days that we've built in before the actual start of the school year is allowing for not only staff preparation, but also allowing families and students to pick up their, their tech, technology devices as well. And then finally, just a couple of, just quick reminders for our community that the first day of school, August 31st will be a transition day for those that are going to be new to buildings, so that would be for kindergarten, sixth and ninth grade, and then September 1st would be all other students would be launching again first day of school, and that's first day of school both if they're doing the 100% online or the, the virtual, which will eventually, we hope, move into in-person, so all students will be starting on those dates. I also want to just forecast, we have two Spanish language community forums scheduled. These, so we did hold community forums several weeks ago for, for, for parents and community members, and I know the schools are right now in the process of holding their school community forums, but we are gonna offer two community forums exclusively in Spanish, you can see the dates there, we have one in the evening, Monday, August 24th, at 6:30 PM, and then one in the morning on Tuesday, August 25th at 9 AM, and if you go to our website, you can get additional details. And I believe I am back with you now, and that concludes my report.
Thanks, Dr. Schaefer. Next are board committee reports. I'm just gonna randomly call on people because of wherever you are on my screen, so I'm gonna start with Stu, if you have a report.
I have a brief report. I kind of accidentally happened upon the device distribution at Turner Middle School today. I was walking my dog and saw all these cars parked in the driveway going into Turner, and so I walked in and asked one of the staff what was going on, I thought, well, it's not registration, she told me, so I stood back and watched for a few minutes, and their operation was truly a well-oiled machine. The principal, Brandy Greaves, was out there as well greeting parents. It was great, I'm glad that I was accidentally in, in the right place. And Matt Kuhn, if you're listening, I have a question for you that came after I posted a couple of pictures on Facebook. Are you there, Matt?
I'm here, go ahead.
Okay. The question was from a birthed parent who wondered if there will be an opportunity in the evening for parents to pick up devices, people who work during the day. Will there be a time or another location or a place for people who weren't able to make it today?
What school was this?
This was at Turner.
Okay, so that Turner is up to, the schedule is up to Turner. So, I'm really not sure, I could look up their schedule for you, and I'll put that in the chat box for you once I find it, but if there's an issue going on, we probably need to talk to Turner's leadership and ask them if they could do that.
And I, I wouldn't say, Matt, that there's a, an issue necessarily, this parent just asked if there was an opportunity like in the evening, so, yeah, if you'll send that in for me, that information on chat, I'll, I'll pass that along to the parent, thank you. That's my report, Lori.
Thanks. Mark Seder is next.
So, just for clarification, we actually haven't done board reports since late June, is that correct?
It's, I think it's been a while, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Because our meetings in July were not regular meetings.
Right, well typically, yeah, July is kind of a month off for the board, but this is no typical year. So, looking back at our calendar, Board of Education, all seven of us, all seven board members got a chance to join everybody for a bus tour, we got to see the Thompson Career Campus, Ferguson High School, very, very excited to see that, final touches being put on that. We also got to see the Early Childhood Center, and again, very similar situation, very exciting to see those buildings getting finalized, and a lot of progress being made. Another thing, and once again, I joined all seven board members, five in-person high school graduations in our district. I am so proud. A big thank you goes out to our high schools, our district, Laramie County and our city, and everybody involved for making that possible, for making that happen, I know it means a ton to those graduates. I drove by Riverview and Berthold Elementary and Ivy Stockwell to see some of the construction that's going on in those places, very exciting to see progress is being made during these challenging times. And then, yeah, we are ramping up the school year, so the TAOU committee is happening this Friday, DAC is gonna be next Tuesday, planning on being to those, and I also had to take a step back and remind myself that October is six weeks away, and right now that's our target for in-person instruction to begin physically. And so we have, I know we have a lot of work that we need to do, a lot of planning by then, but I'm starting to count the days, and so are my kids. So, that's it for me.
Thanks, Mark. Barb, you're up next.
Okay. Um, this last Monday night, we had our first family pie for early childhood meeting, virtually, and we had good attendance, we had several of the parents that were part of it last year were able to join us, and Lamb spent some time going over what the plan looks like for early childhood and how they're going to work it out so that there's online, but the kids meeting, working with the teachers, so it sounds like it's gonna be a really appropriate thing for the kids. And then I sat in on a long day of all of the forums that were held on that marathon day, and I listened in and, and tracked the questions, and I was, they were, they were very consistent, falling into categories, so I felt like the group of people that had to respond to those, primarily Todd and Dawn, I think it was, did a wonderful job of maintaining just the flashing from group to group and knowing, okay, did I say it to this group or, or not? They did a great job of being able to pull all the answers together for everybody. And Bill, I think, was in on that too. Yeah, several people. That's it.
Thanks, Barb. Dawn Kirk, you are up next.
Well, I am excited because I'm starting to get updates directly from the schools, and so for many of you who have students like I do, that has been the, a game changer, and I know that I've gotten several messages from people saying, wait a minute, I heard Dr. Schaefer, or I heard Don Huckabee, or I heard Todd say something during one of the forums that now the school has adapted. And my best advice, given where we're at, and I know you've heard this before, but now that, that we're, are seeing our teachers getting involved, we're seeing our administrators getting involved, we're seeing, you know, things happening at the school level, most of your answers are gonna come at the school level for your students. And if that's not the case, obviously you have, you have the ways to get ahold of us as you are tonight with public comments, with the frequently asked questions on our website, the website I see is getting constantly updated, and so there is a lot of information available, but when it comes to your specific questions about your child and those things, the teachers now are, are starting to take the, take those decisions. And so, that's my advice, and if I'm wrong, I hope someone will correct me when they speak later. And then, the other thing I've been doing in our downtime this July and August has been some anti-racism professional development for education. So, spent quite a bit of time on some conferences and some different webinars, getting information on how we really truly turn our equity policy into action. And that's it.
Thanks, Dawn. Pam, you are up next.
Okey dokey, so I am gonna be reporting from the Thompson Education Foundation. We have been meeting last, actually met last evening, virtually. So, the Thompson Education Foundation, in conjunction with the graduating seniors, awarded $259,000 to 109 Thompson School District students this spring, which was phenomenal. And so, that's a huge impact, and they've been tracking those graduates. Five percent, only five percent of those students have deferred their college semester for this fall. So, 95% of them have decided to go ahead, whether it's online or in-person, every, every university is doing their own thing. I think that's a big testament to how strong our school district and our, our teachers are, that these kids really want to continue going on with their education, and no matter what, through thick or thin. You also probably know that Thompson Education Foundation finished up the Help Kids Succeed program that serves over 1,700 students in the district, even with the school year starting remotely. So, that was huge, it was a very difficult year for Kim to organize this, but they got it done in a timely fashion. Probably, I think we heard about the, the drive-in money raiser, that sort of thing, stay tuned, there's a lot going on, the foundation is working really hard to figure out how best to support staff and students in this time of the pandemic, so stay tuned, thanks.
Thanks, Pam. Paul, you are up next.
My items have been covered, so nothing additional.
I know, that's why I saved myself for last, but, but also, I don't have any committees anymore because, you know, as president, I have some extra meetings with Dr. Schaefer and things like that, so you guys get to do all the fun committees, so I don't have that, but I do want to say that personally, my student and I went to Loveland High School today and did the drive-through pickup of the Chromebooks, which was kind of a hoot, we, we thought we'd get there at 12 o'clock and we'd be, you know, right early and get there first, and the line of traffic was all the way snaked through the parking lot and lined up out on 29th Street in both directions, and I thought, oh, I have a meeting at 6 o'clock, am I ever gonna get out of here? And actually, it, you know, it, it took a while, but it went smoothly, and it went, you know, it, it kept moving. There was a ton of staff out there, and they were handling it all well, and they had the kids log into their devices before we left, so that if there were any problems, then they would troubleshoot and fix them, so it went really well, I was pleasantly surprised because I thought maybe I'd still be sitting there, but I'm not, so that was really, really good, so kudos to, I'm not sure if it was the IT staff or school staff, I saw a couple of school staff people there, and I don't know if the rest of them were some of Matt's IT people, but both, Matt's telling me they were both, so kudos to everybody who had a part in that, it was very well organized, and hopefully it'll go smoothly for whoever else has to do them. There's a second day, I think, tomorrow too, so, yeah, maybe the line won't be as long tomorrow. All right, that takes care of board and committee reports, and so public comment is next. Matt, I'm gonna turn it to you, I think, because you have all the technology there. So, just to kind of let folks know, we have about 15, 18 calls, I think. People did a good job of listening last time, and, and we, we improved the instructions so that everybody could see that they had to leave their name and phone number and all that to identify themselves, so that we could share their comments with you. So, I'm gonna turn it to Matt, and everyone make sure your mics are off, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you very much. This is Matt Kuhn, I'm the chief technology officer, and I'll begin playing your public comment. There are about 18 of these, so please bear with me as I stream each one, one at a time. Here comes the first one.
Hello, my name is Lenaya Zink, address 301 Jewel Court, Fort Collins, 80525. I have children that go to Loveland High School in Lucille Irwin. I'm calling to comment on the potential removal of the Indian as the Loveland High School mascot. I'm just calling to say that I think that it would be very wrong to remove the Indian as the mascot, as I have been researching, I'm also a former Loveland High School alumni graduating in 1995, but it was chosen for its bravery, loyalty, and patriotism. I feel that out of all of the school events that I've attended, and I have seen my children attend, there's not ever been any disrespect in any way towards the Indians mascot. In addition, I feel that our school has done a good job in working with the Navajo Indian, the Indian tribe in learning about it and additionally finding ways to provide further respect towards it. I feel that especially given the current state, emotional state and psychological state of our children, that this is something that just does not need to be additionally taken away from them. If you have any questions, you could contact me at 970-443-1706. Again, my name is Lenaya Zink, address is 301 Jewel Court, thank you.
Okay, and here comes the next one. Just a moment.
Hi, my name is Sean Johnson. My address is 615 McKinley Avenue, Loveland, Colorado, 8537. The topic of my call is removing the racist mascot of Loveland High School. So, I'm going to voice my support for removing this racist mascot of Loveland High School. I don't believe the district would use the word "Indian" in written statements about the Native American students in the district, nor do I believe the district would refer to Native American students as Indians in face-to-face conversations with Native American students. So, why does the district continue to use this racist symbol in our community? It's time to remove this symbol from Loveland High School. Thank you. My phone number is 970-342-9823.
Hi, my name is Cindy Ticer. I'm calling in as a parent of a Loveland High School graduate. I'm calling in today about the proposal to change the Loveland High School Indian mascot. My phone number is 4802099097, and my address is 1714 Hitchwagon Drive, Loveland. Our son spent his entire high school years at Loveland High School, he was a 2020 graduate. If it wasn't bad enough that the ridiculous propaganda stripped him of his senior varsity baseball year, as well as the decent graduation celebration, now he want to change the proud school mascot. Why? I don't know, I guess because you don't understand its history. All of you in favor of this need to go back to school and retake your history classes. We are proud of our Loveland High School Indian mascot, as you should also be. If you feel the need to do such ridiculousness, then please return to some liberal consumed places like Boulder, that radically act without thinking and without doing their homework. To change our mascot is disrespectful and entirely self-serving and political. And honestly, how dare you involve our high school in your own political agenda? Here's an idea. Spend your time more productively, like figuring out how to get the students back in school. You're doing more harm than good keeping them out of school. So, put aside your fears and your political propaganda, leave our high school mascot alone, and figure out how to kid, get the kids back in school. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. Again, 4802099097. My email is the number four, C Ticer, T I C E R, at gmail dot com. My address is 1714 Hitchwagon Drive, Loveland, Colorado.
Hi, this is Debbie Evans. I live at 2113 James Drive, Loveland, Colorado, 80538. And I'm calling the topic of the Loveland Indians name, name change. And my reason being is that we've been Loveland residents for over 45 years, raised three daughters in the Loveland District, we are proud to be popular Indians. So, I'm calling to say that I'm opposed to spending more tax money to change our beloved mascot names just to please 1% of the population that says that this is politically or socially incorrect. I can be reached via phone number 970-691-4877. Um, I can be reached via phone number nine seven zero six nine one four eight seven seven. Or also by email at M D A W M at M S N dot com. Thanks for listening.
Hi, my name is Jay Ward. Address five oh one West Fourth Street. And my phone number is one seven zero six six three three five one eight. I am a student at Loveland High School and I am speaking on behalf of the students behind the petition to change the mascot which has received over sixty-two hundred signatures. I am not native. I cannot speak for native people. First and foremost, I urge you to uplift and listen to native voices in this decision. At the end of the day, indigenous people are the ones wronged by the stereotypical mascot. I would like to provide you with some fast facts. According to the National Indian Council on Aging, suicide is the second leading cause of death for native youth. And the native youth suicide rate is two point five times higher than the overall national average. According to the American Psychological Association, native mascots are found to have a large negative impact on mental health of native youth. In addition, multiple studies have found that native mascots and caricatures lead to an increased perception of natives as violent or aggressive by their non-native peers. Loveland High's mascot is actively causing harm. I urge the board to follow the guidelines they set for themselves in the equity policy and immediately start working with native groups to bring positive change to Loveland and change our offensive mascot. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darren Gunn. Uh, my address is two three four nine West Forty-Sixth Street, Loveland, Colorado, eight oh five three eight. Uh, the topic of conversation is just um about the Loveland High School Indian mascot. I think it would be a shame to change that. Uh, I think it's a proud tradition and I don't see anything derogatory or negative about it. I believe that the Indians were, you know, warriors and, you know, it's a, to me, it's a great mascot and I hope that the school doesn't cave to, or the school district doesn't cave into, you know, pressure or things that are out there that would make it into something negative because I believe the Indian people don't feel like it's a negative thing either. And uh, my understanding Loveland High has always gone through things properly, having the chief bless the school and, you know, other things that go with that. So again, I just think it would be a shame to lose that tradition of who the Loveland High School Indians are. And so that's my two cents. My phone number is nine seven zero two one three four three three four. My email is Darren, D A R R E N at Kibby F I S H B U R N dot com. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Vasquez. My address is seven thirty Fourth Street Southeast, Loveland, Colorado, eight zero five three seven. Um, I guess the topic for me would be gender bread curriculum. And my question is, is there is something floating around on the internet right now? Um, about you guys implementing some kind of gender identity for the kids at school. And they'll be learning it. You're trying to teach your teachers about it. And my concern is, um, and I opt out of it. Why is it happening at school? This to me is a conversation that a parent has with her child at home. Um, so it is a main concern for me. I also know a couple of parents that have also shared this online. And they are probably not returning to your school, me possibly being one of them. So I'm just curious if you guys have a answer for that. Is that what you are teaching? Are you using a gingerbread man to teach our kids about sexuality? And I don't know, it just seems really confusing because I have a friend and her husband is a teacher in the district. And he said that it is supposed to be taught in the school. So, I mean, I'm really looking for answers because I know a few parents that are also looking to me to get answers on this topic. My number is nine seven zero four four three four three one five and it's my direct cell phone number and I will answer if you call me. Thanks.
My name is Elle De Ward. I am a former student at Loveland High School. My address is seventeen twenty-four Rio Crestia Road in Fort Worth, Texas. And my email is E L L E N J E E W A A R D at gmail dot com. I am calling today to demand that the Thompson School District change Loveland High School's offensive mascot. This is a long overdue change that needs to happen to ensure that the district uphold the educational equity policy ADB, which states that the district has a responsibility to be culturally sensitive and responsive and address one's own biases. As the Indians, Loveland High School has in the past claimed to uphold the name Indians in honor. However, the school cannot honor the tribe it claims to represent without teaching their students about the history of the tribe and who they are. Moreover, as the Indians, Loveland High School not only represents the tribe it claims to represent, but also Native American tribes across the country. This means Loveland needs more approval than just the tribe it claims to represent. Lastly, with the mascot as Indians, Loveland allows for cultural appropriation to ensue. Students wear head dresses to games and sports teams participate in culturally insensitive cheers before the games. Native American culture is not school spirit. In order to uphold what the district promises in policy ADB, the district must change Loveland High School's mascot. Thank you very much. My phone number is five one five six one two three two six four.
Hello, my name is Sarah Johnson. My address is eleven oh nine West Seventh Street in Boblin. And my phone number is nine seven zero three four two five three seven four. I am calling about removing the Indian mascot at Loveland High in Bill Reed. As a current student at LHS and a former student at Bill Reed, I think it is wrong to oversimplify a diverse group of people into a single symbol representing our schools. Studies have shown the Indian mascot to have a direct damaging effect on indigenous students. And the mascot, my mascot also allows other students to appropriate native culture by wearing traditional garments without knowing the meaning behind them. The fact that we are not taught about native land and history yet feel entitled to exploit parts of native culture is wrong. As the district and community of Loveland, we have an obligation to make sure everyone is welcome, welcomed and supported here. The current mascots do not help our goal and we can do better by changing them. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Ruby Crowell. My address is six oh two West Third Street, Loveland, Colorado. And my number is nine seven zero five eight one four four five three. I'm calling today to demand that the Thompson School District change Loveland High School's offensive mascot. This is a long overdue change that needs to happen to ensure that the district upholds the educational equality policy ADB, which states that the district has a responsibility to be culturally sensitive and responsive and address one's own biases. As the Indians, Loveland High School has in the past claimed to uphold the name Indians. However, the school cannot honor the tribe it claims to represent without teaching their students about the history of the tribe and who they are. Moreover, as the Indians, Loveland High School not only represents the tribe it claims to represent, but also Native American tribes across the country. This means that Loveland needs more approval than just the tribe it claims to represent. Lastly, with the mascot as Indians, Loveland allows for cultural appropriation to ensure students wear head dresses to games and sports teams participate in culturally insensitive cheers before games. Native American culture is not a school spirit. In order to uphold what the district promises in policy ADB, the district must change Loveland High School's mascot. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Katrina Nelson. Uh, my address is six one five Agate Court, Fort Collins, Colorado. Um, and my phone number is nine seven zero nine three oh one nine seven. So my comment is regarding meeting uh Loveland, uh, the Loveland High School's mascot. So I am a rising senior at Loveland High School and I have a lot of concerns about our mascot. So virtually every other mascot in the country, and every other mascot in our district is an animal, yet we have an entire diverse group of people. Uh, this is a creating Native American people to animals, which is just silly, wrong, and completely embarrassing. As a student, you want to have pride in my school. Uh, this is just a claim that we surround, that we honor surrounding native tribes with our usage of the mascot. Yet I have never in my three years at Loveland High School, this is any sort of education surrounding the history or cultural significance of the native tribes in the area. We are not honoring a culture because we really know nothing about the culture. Additionally, just a small amount of research on this topic is showing the Indian mascot has really negative consequences on our self-perception of actual American Indian students. Their traditions are valuable, but they can never be of the expense of other people. And in my experience, Loveland High is weak down upon by other schools because we have such outdated mascots that is a damagingly limited portrayal of a diverse group of people. It's embarrassing and the change is wrong over two. This is why I'm asking for the purpose of our Indian mascot. Uh, thank you for your time. My phone number once again is nine seven zero nine three oh one nine seven.
Hi, my name is Tara Hildebrand. I live at six oh five Harrison Avenue, Loveland, Colorado, eight oh five three seven. I am submitting a public comment in reference to Bill Reed Middle School and Loveland High School's race-based mascots. When I first heard about a new petition opposing the elimination of the Native American mascots, I was frustrated and dismayed. However, after further contemplation, I understand this makes perfect sense. Many of the people who support the use of these racist mascots are alumni of the schools. This is the exact behavior the American Psychological Association stated would be the end result of the continued usage of these symbols. I quote the APA, "The symbols and mascots teach non-native children that it's acceptable to participate in culturally abusive behavior and perpetuate inaccurate misconceptions about native culture and clothing." By the school district continuing to use these symbols, this community continues to teach our children that racism is acceptable. And as these children grow up, the practice is passed on to the next generation. Now is the time to change this cycle. It is not acceptable to participate in culturally abusive behavior. And this flies in the face of the district stance on equity. The school board has the opportunity to set our community on a path toward inclusion and kindness. I look forward to the board ending this form of racism and inequity in our school district. You can reach me at, um, my phone number is nine seven zero six six seven six three one seven. Thank you. Bye.
Hello, I'm Christina Linda Lancey calling from nineteen oh five Black Hawk Street in Aurora. I am Native American and I firmly believe you trying to remove the Native American in form of Loveland High School is completely absurd. You guys are trying to wipe away our history and I don't find it very nice or happy. If you need to call me back, my phone number is nine seven zero two zero 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 nine six one. Again, removing the Indians is very absurd. Thank you. Have a great day.
Connie Killian, five seven zero two Bitter Bush Way, Loveland. Topic is Loveland High School mascot. This um is no way offensive to anyone other than the cancel culture people. We have gone through this before in twenty fifteen and worked closely with getting this saved. We um honestly did not feel that the school district would even consider this nonsense. Um, but we did start a petition to save our mascot on last Thursday and we are well into thirteen hundred signatures. You know, really, this is just not the time to even consider it. We need some normal. And this is not offensive. It's respectful. Uh, just please really reconsider this. Um, my number is nine seven zero two one eight six six five five. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, my name is Shay Pfeifer. My address is six seven two one Rose Creek Way, Fort Collins, Colorado, eight zero five two five. We are in the Thompson School District. And I have some severe concerns. At the beginning, when the schools closed, it was understanding and the kids were able to finish up the year okay. However, as time progresses, we need to start taking into consideration their mental health. I have a six-year-old who was admitted into therapy due to depression and suicidal thoughts at the age of six. Six. And all the girl wants is to be able to go to school, to learn and to be around her friends and socialize. I'm watching students from all over the country, all over the country, specifically one county over, enjoying their first day of school. Kids are running out smiles on their faces and the joy on their face. And at some point, we need to take into consideration what this is doing to our children. If children all over the country are able to do this, there is no reason why Thompson School District can't. There are kids committing suicide. There are kids abused. There are kids starving to death because they don't have a safe place to go. And for what? One percent of our population? The whole point of the shutdown was to prepare our hospitals to be able to care for people who test positives for COVID nineteen. Nowhere in there did it say that we need to shut down our entire country, shut down our economy for almost well over six months now. It's not fair to our children. We are ruining the future of our country by not allowing them to be kids, to go and socialize, to learn from people who aren't their parents, who parents are trying to juggle working full-time jobs and taking care of their kids and making sure their kids get an education. This is not America. This is not what we stand for. And it's time for us to stand up for our children and to get our children back to a healthy, living life. My phone number is nine seven zero nine eight eight seven zero eight nine. And I'm happy to discuss this topic with anybody and everybody. It's time we stand up for our kids. Enough is enough.
Hi, my name is Weston Sheck. My address is five two five Roma Drive, Fort Collins, Colorado. And I'm calling about changing Loveland High School's mascot. I'm an alumni of Loveland High School. I'm now starting my freshman year in college. I'm going to college in New York, which is much more diverse than it ever was in Loveland, Colorado. And I can tell you that I'm ashamed to tell anybody that my mascot was an Indian. I think making a racist people a mascot is disgusting and I can't believe it's gone on as long as it has. This doesn't mean I don't respect the Native American people. I think it's, they're incredible, preservant, just an incredible people, but I think that having that as mascot, especially with such a low diversity school, especially fully with Native Americans as Loveland High School is, I think it's very disrespectful. And we need to understand that in we, in, it would be very little effort to change the mascot. And that would take away absolutely any chance of offending any Native American students or any other person that took offense to that. And very little what happened to the school with the changing of the mascot. It's very easy and very little what happened. Now, my phone number is nine seven zero two eight six eight one two six. I would absolutely love to be contacted because I, this is an issue I care very much about. And I was deeply disappointed to see that it wasn't brought up further in my four years at Loveland High School. I'd love to see the mascot changed. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shannon Tyler. My address is four one seven six Saltbrush Court, Loveland, Colorado. And the topic of my comment is Loveland High School changing the mascot. I'm calling today to demand that the Thompson School District change Loveland High School's offensive mascot. This is a long overdue change that needs to happen to ensure that the district upholds the educational equity policy ADB, which states that the district has a responsibility to be culturally sensitive and responsive and address one's own biases. As the Indians, Loveland High School has in the past claimed to uphold the name Indians in honor. However, the school cannot honor the tribe it claims to represent without teaching their students about the history of the tribe and who they are. Moreover, as the Indians, Loveland High School not only represents that tribe that it claims to represent, but also Native American tribes across the country. This means that Loveland needs more approval than just the tribe it claims to represent. Lastly, with the mascot as Indians, Loveland allows for appropriation to ensue, to ensue. Students wear- Students wear headdresses to games and sports teams participate in culturally insensitive cheers. Native American culture is not school spirit. That is cultural appropriation. In order to uphold what the district promises in Policy ADB, the district must change Loveland High School's mascot. Thank you. And my number is nine seven zero eight one five one five eight two.
My name is Tyler Matthew Burwick. Um, sixty-five seventy Longville Drive, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Eight oh nine one six. Um, I'm calling today about the changing of the Loveland High School mascot. And, um, I believe that this should not be changed. It has been a symbol for our community that promotes bravery, love, caring, affection. It's been a symbol of hope for our school. I don't think it's ever been used in a, um, in a bad way or bring discredit upon any, um, Native American nation. Um, I think that thousands of people would be very disappointed about the long history we've had at that school and the love we share with each other with the Indians as our logo. And I'm one voice, but I'm asking, please do not change it. We are so proud of that school. It's the best school in the district. We displayed that symbol with pride. But please do not change that. Thank you. Um, my phone number is nine seven zero six nine zero six four four nine.
Thank you. That was the last public comment.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Um, before we move off this, uh, Laura Lee, I just want to make sure that you're able to capture um, the names and all that to include in the minutes. You're able to do that, correct? From the, from the phone calls? Laura Lee, are you there? You're there. I see you. Okay, I just want to make sure that you're able to, to capture the names for, in the minutes for next time. Okay, good. That's all I needed. Thank you. All right, uh, that brings an end to public comment. Uh, next is the action consent items. And I will go ahead and read these off and then I will entertain a motion to approve them as a whole. Unless there's anything anybody knows they want to pull off right now. So if there's anything you want to pull off there, uh, give me a hands up or something. Okay, seeing nothing, I'll go ahead and read them and then entertain the motion. So the action consent items are six point one, approval of personnel extra duty coaching recommendations. Six point two, approval of expenditures over fifty thousand dollars. Six point three, approval of gifts and donations. Um, Pam, can you read those? When we, okay, after I'm done with this, then you can go ahead and read that. Item six point four, approval of Loveland High School, Loveland High School utility easement. And item six point five, approval of two additional water shares for Riverview PK eight school. Like I said, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve that consent agenda.
So moved. Pam Howard.
Okay, so I've got a motion from Pam Howard and a second from Don Kirk to approve those. Pam, if you would read the gifts, please.
All right, we have one gift and it's, it's a great one. Uh, we, uh, received twenty thousand dollars from the Northern Colorado, Northern Colorado COVID-19 Response Fund. So that's pretty awesome. Thank you to them. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no questions, I'll call for a vote. Uh, Paul, you have a question? Yep.
I just had a quick question for, uh, Dr. Severs. And just looking at the resignation we have, particularly in the classified staff, would you say this is kind of, uh, typical at this time of the year with normal rollover and stuff, or are we seeing a difference due to the challenges we're having with COVID?
Yeah, I, I would say the, you know, we track the reasons why employees, if they give us a reason, uh, we kind of track the reasons just so we can look at that. And, uh, there, there's a higher number of resignations for various reasons, uh, but COVID and nineteen would be a part of that. I couldn't give you the percentage wise, but, but there, there's a percentage of that. There, there's other ones leaving for family reasons, other positions and things like that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Great, thank you. Laura Lee, if you would call the roll, please.
You're on mute.
Yeah, you're, you're still muted. You're still muted. I can't hear you. Although I can hear something.
We can read lips. Paul Banks, aye.
Stu Boyd.
Stu Boyd, aye.
Hang on, guys. I'll, I'll have Dr. Mark call the roll so that we can, we can cover it. And
Can you hear me now?
I've got Laura. Yay.
Sorry. Okay, Stu Boyd.
Stu Boyd, aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
You were muted, Lori.
Sorry, Lori Visda Ward, aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Barbara Cruz, aye.
Mark Seder.
Mark Seder, aye.
Okay, I think we got through that one and, uh, the consent agenda is unanimously adopted. Takes us to, let me see, what time is it? It's seven o'clock. Okay, takes us to, uh, discussion item seven point one, temporary adoption of amended policy IC slash ICA, school calendar instruction time. Don, are you going to say that one? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Metam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Schaefer, Don Huckabee, Chief Academic Officer. And we bring forward tonight a policy that we need to have you temporarily approved, um, tonight so that it is in place and ready for when our students return to school on August thirty-first. And that is policy IC slash ICA, which is, um, Chris and Miss Awards, that is the school calendar, school time and, school calendar, school day and instructional time. And so I'm going to just do a quick little presentation here and grab that just so that, um, the community can see what the, the changes are. Um, this particular policy is being updated to, to account for instructional time that occurs in a remote learning environment. This is recommended by Casby as well as the Colorado Department of Education. Our legal counsel has reviewed this. And then as our legal counsel reviewed, there were some additional edits in the school calendar and the school year portions to, to make it, um, a little bit easier to read and flow a little bit better. The added language that you see in the board policy is there's descriptions of what we mean by active engagement in learning when in remote and online settings. And then it also, uh, provides some specific bullet points of how do we take attendance when in remote and online learning, if a student is not able to participate when there is a synchronous time or when students and teachers are in the learning environment at the same time. And then the other revised language is there for readability and clarity. So we would ask that tonight you approve this policy, um, to temporarily approve this amended policy. And then we'll bring this back to you at your September second meeting for a final full approval.
Thanks, Don. Questions, Board? Barb Cruz.
Yeah, I guess my, my big question is, how do we ever track this? You know, I realize that's a really impossible thing, but how do we help parents understand and, and I guess justify or help them? All of us track that it's, the time is there.
So that's the, the intent and we have some flexibility also this year with the Colorado Department of Education around, um, ensuring that we are covering the content standards and that students are receiving the same, same content, um, and instruction. So that's a part of it. And then from an instructional minutes standpoint, there's also that flexibility that as we count this remote time as, um, when students are engaged in the content away from their teacher. And when you look at the policy, um, it specifically calls out the activities that are under the guidance and direction and monitoring of a teacher. So a teacher can monitor access to, when students access a, a video, um, if they posted a video for a student to watch. Um, they can monitor and track, um, anytime a student is in the Google Classroom and responding to, uh, and so it's, it's our best faith, good faith effort and we are notifying families of this, um, teachers as well. So this is information that's been going out.
Okay, thank you. Don Kirk.
I just wanted to say thank you because this is one thing I've had a lot of questions about is parents who say, well, I'm not entirely sure that we're going to be able to maintain uh, the school schedule along with our work schedule. And so the way that this is worded and the flexibility that, that we're allowing while also making sure that students are in fact learning, um, really is, I think, uh, as good as it gets. To Barb's point, it's, it's nearly impossible to, to get it all. But I feel like we've covered, um, as many bases as we can for the needs of the community and the needs of our students. So thank you very much. Reading this, I, I feel really good about it and it answers a lot of questions I know a lot of families have.
Any other questions for Don? Hearing none. Oh, wait, Mark Seder.
All right. So i- if I understand it correctly, we're asking for, uh, this to temporarily be approved by the board. Is that correct? And is tonight when we want this approved?
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Schaefer. Go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Mark. So technically this is a first read for the board and typically as a first read, we would not approve it formally until the following board meeting. But given the fact that we're going to be launching the school year on August thirty-first, um, we, we need the, we would need this temporarily codified, um, in order for us to take, uh, for the instructional minutes to count. So it has to be part of our board policy. And that's why, uh, we're asking for temporary adoption and then a formal adoption at your next, uh, regular board meeting.
Okay. And then the second question is if we, if we formally adopt this, um, certainly it makes a lot of sense to me in a situation like a pandemic, like what we're in right now. Um, are we asking for a, a permanent change to this policy so that this is available as we move forward, uh, next year, five years, three years from now? And, and what would that look like?
So, uh, ultimately this provides the flexibility. So, um, you know, even if, uh, and we're hopeful that the pandemic will uh, sunset and we'll be able to return back to, uh, traditional in-person. Um, but down the line, we may see that a hybrid model is, is effective instruction. Or maybe there are opportunities to do, uh, virtual learning and, and in-person. The policy just allows for increased flexibility. So it's everything we had and, uh, virtual as well. It's not an or. So it's just really an expansion of how we would count instructional minutes.
Thanks. Uh, kind of along those lines, I could see something like, um, several years ago where we had that big snowstorm right around spring break. I don't know who all remembers that, but we had a snowstorm right at the end of spring break. And then we ended having like three or four extra days of spring break because roofs had to be, um, inspected to make sure the roofs weren't going to cave in. And so I could see us using the very bottom of this, the, the new red line part where it starts with their, in a remote learning environment, in something like that where we had some extended snow day situation or the flood. You know, we had the flood in twenty thirteen where we were out and, and, you know, couldn't do things in person. You know, I, I'm sure kids will be disappointed maybe if we never have a snow day again, but, you know, one snow day is different. But a snow week, perhaps, we would want to be able to recapture those minutes. And this, if I read this right, this would allow us the flexibility to do that. Is that right? Good. I see a lot of heads shaking. Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve this. I've got a motion from Don Kirk and a second from Barb Cruz to approve, um, policy, uh, prove amended policy IC, ICA, school calendar instruction time. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Mark Seder, yeah.
So clarification on the motion, we are temporarily adopting this as it's a first read. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. So we'll have another vote on it, uh, September fifth? Is it September fifth, our next meeting? September second is our next meeting. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Laura Lee, if you want to call the roll?
Paul Banks.
Paul Banks, aye.
Stu Boyd.
Stu Boyd, aye.
Pam Howard.
Pam Howard, aye.
Lori Visda Ward.
Lori Visda Ward, aye.
Don Kirk.
Don Kirk, aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Barbara Cruz, aye.
Mark Seder.
Mark Seder, aye.
Thank you. And we have unanimous approval of that one. All right, uh, that brings us to the bond update, um, which is the first discussion item eight point one. If it's okay with you guys, I'm going to continue on and let Tammy do the bond update and then we will take a break. Nod your head if that's okay. Great. Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Tammy with, uh, bond update.
Um, my name is Tammy Knower. I'm the bond director for Thompson School District. Thank you for the opportunity once again to come before you and show you some of the, um, work that we've done over the summer in one of the craziest years we've all experienced. So I will get right to it. Present. Okay, so this is our typical entry. Um, I'll give you a total bond expenditure update, um, an update by feeder. And then hopefully, uh, we'll get to the pictures and do a summary by school and site. The total bond expenditures, um, we've encumbered a hundred and twenty-two million since my last update in May. That's eleven million dollars more, um, just over the last couple of months. Um, we'll show that through the different feeder systems where that took place and talk a little bit more about it. Um, and then even on the next slide here, we'll go to how that fits in with the overall goal of three years spending a hundred and fifty million dollars. This chart, um, shows in the gray, the planned amount to spend per year to meet that hundred and fifty million dollar goal in three years. The blue lines show what we've actually spent. So you can see in year three, the yellow figure in forty-two million dollars, that shows you what we need to encumber by November of next year of twenty twenty-one in order to meet the hundred and fifty million dollar expenditure requirement. We forecast that between the twenty twenty-one projects that we'll be encumbering yet this fall and then by next fall, we'll be encumbering the twenty twenty-two projects. So we're still well on our way to encumber the hundred and fifty million. And, uh, on a constant basis, we're working with finance again to make sure that plan's in place and we're good to go with that. So we'll hit the Birth at High School feeder first. The expenditures there is about two hundred thousand dollars more than May. Not too much new happened down there, although in the next couple of months, we will be encumbering more for the Birth at High School project, which is a twenty twenty-one project and also the Turner Middle School. The two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in the last couple of months was mainly for Birth at High School to address, uh, some additional costs for the track and field and the, uh, preparation for the twenty twenty-one work at that site. For Thompson Valley, we encumbered approximately six million dollars since May. And most of that was to the Thompson Valley High School. That is a two-year project. So as you know, and we'll see in the pictures, we did accomplish a lot of the work this year, but it is a two-year program and we were able to encumber the next part of that, uh, bringing that, uh, up close to the eight point four million dollar total budget that we have for that site. Mountain View High School, we encumbered approximately seven hundred thousand dollars over the last couple of months. Most of that again is at Mountain View High School, just like Birth at High School for the lighting, the track and, uh, the field. for the lighting, the track and the field changes that we did on that project. For Loveland High School, since May, we've encumbered $3 million. And that was all for the Loveland High School approach. Similar to Thompson Valley two-year program, we have the additional funds to enter or finalize that GMP going into the next round. For the district line, we only encumbered $300,000, which sounds like pocket change compared to the millions at the other feeders. And that piece was solely for the security. We entered into a, or extended the contract with JHL and HSS that are installing all the security access control and video cameras throughout the district. We entered into phase two, which is the support buildings. All these schools are done. We're just going back and doing some punch list work at those. So the $300,000 roughly was for the phase two project piece of that. So I use this slide from last time. 25 facilities were worked on in the last six months, five months, three months for sure during the summer months. So the blue just shows the update as of two weeks ago. We finished the roofing, more or less. We have some projects that we were able to extend due to school being delayed a few weeks. So we will be finished by the end of this month, maybe a week or two into September. But no impact to students or the staff that are teaching from the schools. We continued large-scale bond work at Stansbury, the early childhood. We're finishing, we're going, we're finishing phase two and going into phase three, which we've talked before is that Head Start grant. So we're looking at options to work in the cooling of that facility, parking lot changes, furniture and playground enhancements due to that grant that we were offered. TCC and Ferguson High School is complete. We're doing punch list work furnishing the building now. Riverview pre-K is coming right along, will be dried in by November, which is a term to describe having the shell complete so that you can heat the inside and start doing finishes and work your way through the building. The security upgrades we talked about and Birthed and Ivy are complete. And again, we're doing punch list and cleaning our way out of those. Furniture refresh continues. The difficulty there has been trying to address the COVID impact and how we can still buy new furniture and still address the spacing out of kiddos when they do come back. So we're working hard on that with procurement and facilities and then with the educators to make sure we keep some of the old stuff if we need to, honoring, you know, what the community has paid for and what they see us doing with the furniture. And then also trying to enhance and refresh the schools, which was our target goal. The cooler and freezer over at SSC will be complete in September. And then we'll move facilities from their facility building over downtown in September. So with all that said, that's all the financial piece. How we plan going into 2021, the first part that we have to do is close out the 2020 projects. We look to close those contracts and purchase orders by November. We need to do that, that will help us make the critical decisions moving into the 2021 projects. We'll know how we ended up, we'll know what funds are remaining from 2020. And we'll also be able to start evaluating options for contingency. We've always had fall of 2020 as our target to start that process and work with staff to evaluate what contingency could be used for and bring that back to CBOC and to the board for discussion. So moving into the 2021 projects, we will be coming to the board September 2nd with all the project budgets for 2021 that will allow us to enter into contracts with architects and contractors to move through the design process and the permitting and construction in the spring. We'll also have a better idea of staff project assignments. So once you know how much money you have, how big the projects are, Todd and I need to get together and talk about the best grants and how that will further enhance those projects, both financially and potentially with schedule. That will help me then do my staff project assignments and make sure we can get the work done and we have the staff to do the work. 2021 projects, the design meetings are underway. We do have DAG committees formed, the design advisory groups, and principals are involved and they're being updated weekly as things happen outside of those DAG meetings also. So it's the exciting time of the year again, even though we can't meet in person as much as we want to, but the meetings are going and they're being very productive. The communications will continue with website changes. We'll continue to update dollars spent, pictures and videos. I have some appointments with Brian Lindaker in the next couple of days to get our next video up, which will be a summary of the summer work. We met with CBOC just a week or two ago. We did not have any action items to take to them, but their efforts continue. They had some great questions and reporting to the community from their start or from their angle. We also were able to take some tours with the Board of Education, construction and bus tour of the land and the opportunities the district has for growth. And then, of course, we'll work with Mike and the communications team for the Fall Mailer. COVID-19 summary, what's the impact to the construction program? In general, I can honestly say there's been no impact. We were able to finish all the projects on time. We received temporary certificates of occupancy from the state, which means we could occupy the buildings if the kiddos were coming back on schedule. The thing that COVID did, and I'll talk through some of the impacts or delays that we had. The thing delaying school did for us is it allowed us to expand on what we finished this year that was in the bond scope. So instead of wrapping things up and having to work our way out really quick to get kids in on the 17th, we've now been given the gift of time and just working around teachers and the education they have to do from the sites. But as we go through the pictures, I'll show you some of the, I call it enhanced work that we were able to do, staying in the buildings a little longer just to finish things and make sure we use materials that were originally designed and specified. One of the best examples I can give is carpet. We had a huge carpet impact. The material and the factories were just not producing like they should because of their own issues with COVID. So we had the opportunity to either change products and go to a product that wasn't the highest desired product or go ahead and wait a little longer to get the correct carpet here. And we chose to wait to get the good material here, make sure it's installed. So you'll see some of the schools, Winona Monroe, I think Sarah Milner and Kerry Martin, were impacted by that where we could have been done and we were ready to occupy, but it was sure nice to be able to wait and make sure we got the right product that we really wanted in these buildings. One of the biggest impacts was the permits being issued by the state. They had labor issues and being able to access their files and their offices too. So permits that usually take eight to 12 weeks took double that. We were waiting right till mid-July for a permit when normally we would have those end of May or June. So we were able to, again, the efforts of our teams, our pre-qualified contractors and architects, to be able to respond and recover with a late permit, do as much of work as they could before the permit and then legally and safely move forward and still finish on time. It was quite a summer to see that come together. We did have a worker test positive at one of the sites. And working through that process, not like working with students and staff are very different, and it's in the contractor's court on a lot of the construction projects. But we did go through that contact tracing and working with the county and Joe Vajansky and Todd's leadership on that process was very useful and very helpful. We were able to access buildings, like I said, that's a positive always for construction. And we'll see how this, you know, further different educational approach allows us to get things done around the educational model. And then we're just going to continue monitoring how materials and labor changes across the nation. Try to keep materials coming from in the US would be nice and that would help a lot. And then we also have contingency planning for changes, building access, industry changes. So we get to go into the pictures now. I'd like to show you as many as I can in my time. So if you have questions, please interrupt, otherwise I'll just give a quick summary. This is the TCC or Ferguson High School. I wanted to make sure top left, that I kept a before picture in, that was just barely a month ago. And you can see the bottom left now, the entry is complete. And it's, like I said, it's furnished, staff is in the building now. And besides unpacking and spreading out the furniture and understanding how they want to use the building, it's ready to go. You got to understand too that these pictures are approximately two, two and a half weeks old to meet the deadline to submit to the board. So the picture on the right showing in the great assembly area, a wood wall going up that will have nine TV business display visual aid, that is now complete. So a lot of these pictures, even just two, two and a half weeks old, are outdated. Another look at Thompson Crew Campus Ferguson High School. The picture on the left is the Van Buren area, an open area. The middle area is the advanced technology. And the bottom right is the TCC entrance. These pictures show a conference room on the left and the TCC area on the top right, that's the CNA program. Again, a lot of the building is furnished now. The last two weeks, the furniture people were there full-time for two weeks, unloading, setting up, assembling and hauling off trash. So it is a full building now. Early childhood at Stansbury, the change to the front has been completed with the additional colors. And the interior, that's right, when you walk in the front entrance, you can't even recognize it now with the colors and the clean refurbishment of that school. Inside, it's also been redone. The right picture is the media center that was sunken in the middle of the building. And on the left is a typical classroom. Birthed and Ivy, again, two weeks ago, furniture on the left was not assembled and distributed and flooring wasn't complete. It is now complete and we're ready to use. Riverview, again, like I talked earlier, will be ready to dry in by November so they can finish inside. Top right picture, that whole hallway is pretty much done with drywall now. So believe it or not, they're drywelling and finishes will start before we know it. The left picture shows the mock-up, those are all the different materials that will be used on the outside of the building. So picture that in expanded view, but we review that and approve the colors before they proceed. These are pictures of the gym, same gym. There's the, on the left side is from the inside looking at the stage of the music room. And then from the outside on the bottom right, looking through that same expanse. Loveland High School, top left, we modified the entry. So we have a secure entry where you walk in and get checked in. The picture here, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but it used to have the SRO's office right in the way, right when you walk into the building. We've moved that over against the wall, polished the floor, light fixtures. We've now painted the school colors around the cafeteria, really nice, clean, fresh look. The auditorium on the bottom left is one of those examples of being able to do more. We had in our summer work this year redoing some light fixtures in the ceiling. So we took out the whole middle section of seating. Because we were delayed and we knew students wouldn't be in the building, we got approval to stay in there, keep those seats out and repair some of the clouds, the dimming system, work that would have had to be done next summer. And we would have had to take the seats out again to do it. So those are the kinds of things where we could have been done wrapped up, but we were able to stay a little longer working with the principal and make sure that we could do a more efficient approach. The bottom right bleachers are also complete. They have the LHS in the front of the seats now and the school colors. It's amazing view, but two weeks ago, I couldn't have shown you that. Thompson Valley High School, top left, we replastered the pool and repaired some of the tile work. It is now full and it's starting to be heated for use, I believe, in the next week or two. And then again, just showing a lot of polished floor down the hallways, classrooms, a new stage four bottom left that was completed for Ferguson High School's graduation. Ray Patterson Stadium, again, for graduation, you all were able to see this, but it was kind of neat to put a photo collage together of the scoreboard, field and bleachers there with the big banners. Monroe and Winona, they both received flooring throughout the hallways and the cafeteria in the middle there. Again, just a really good refresh and just looks like a new building. Support Services Center, I know Lisa Undergordon is thrilled about this. We went from, on the left is what she had for a freezer and cooler to something on the right that's, went from, I'm thinking around 400 square feet to 1,400 square feet. Plus, we have the height and the ability to stack. So that will be up and running by the end of the month and she'll be able to start using that and they're thrilled. Roofing projects just looks like a snowstorm swept through the district, but all that white is sealed up, good to go with 25-year, 30-year warranties, 24-hour leak response. The roof projects are just amazing upgrades for the district. Some pictures I snuck in when the board and we took a tour and Todd gave some guiding moments there of both the pre-K and the top right. There's the bus that we took on the left and standing on Ray Pat Field, social distancing, of course. TCC, we're also able to walk through that. You were able to see it in a fairly complete condition. But again, just a month makes a lot of difference. So if you can get out there now, it'd be great. Then on the right is early childhood at Stansbury. So again, thank you so much for the community, to staff. I know there's so many other stresses this year that I can't even fathom from the educational side. So our little piece of the world seems like a small, but so impactful and needing the flexibility and the buy-in from educators, facilities, all the departments in the district. So it's an awful weird time we're living through, but we're all in it together and it's coming together.
Thanks, Tammy. Anybody have any quick questions for Tammy before I let her go? That was a great presentation, I love all the photos. I see Stu's hand first, so go ahead, Stu.
All right. First of all, thank you Thompson School District voters for passing the bond issue and the Mill levy override in 2018. Whether your address is Loveland, Birthed, Fort Collins, Johnstown, Windsor, help me, what other community addresses might there be who comprise our school district? Maybe I had them all. So first of all, thank you so much. This presentation would not have been possible if you hadn't voted in favor of the bond issue and the Mill levy override. Then Tammy, I do have a question for you. And I apologize a bit because I probably should have realized this before. But I'm wondering why the expenditure at Birthed Elementary is $1.3 million more than Ivy when both are receiving the same number of classrooms, bathrooms, et cetera? Is there considerable additional work also being done at Birthed Elementary?
No, Stu, that can simply be explained by a difference in site conditions. That can make a huge difference in what they're doing there. There were differences too in the amount of site work between playgrounds, grading issues, drainage, that kind of thing. And also the actual square footage of the buildings are, the addition pieces were a little bit different. There were also different components inside between fire alarm systems, either partial system replacement or full system replacement. So a lot of those little nuances really make a difference that does show when you compare those numbers side by side.
Okay, so it's actually a variety of factors?
Yes, yes, it's not just the new square footage.
As I said, I hadn't noticed that difference in amount and I just wondered what the reason was. Thanks, Tammy.
I think I saw Mark Seder and Paul, so go ahead, Mark, and then Paul.
All right, so Tammy, thank you. Fantastic to hear that we're gaining some efficiencies and that results in cost savings. So, you know, unfortunately, we're fortunate in having that additional access. Love to hear about that. Couple of questions that I wanted to cover and I think these will be pretty quick. So pretty much every school or almost every school has already gotten a lot of roofing work done. So pretty much every school or almost every school has already gotten a lot of roofing work done. That's really excited, exciting. And that's that's shown, we've got a footnote in there that explains how it's included in the budget. So just wanted to cover, some of our schools have about 1% of their budget encumbered right now to date. Like BFK is an example. And then others have more than 80%. Just real quick, what factors caused that difference?
A lot of it is just schedule. When you look at, you know, out online, we have, you know, the overall schedule. A lot of those just haven't started yet. So we do have a plan for a lot of projects. I think I counted 11 or 12 that start for 2021. And then we still have projects in 2022 and a couple that go to 2023. So it's just merely a fact of having to split up the work over a four to five year program versus being able to get into all of them at once.
And then when that schedule was assembled, the primary motivator for the order was more efficiency and and cost effectiveness. Above all, or what was, what were the, what were the factors that led towards building that schedule in that particular order?
Sure, a lot of it is priority. So any life safety, critical issues. I know all the roofing we're finishing this year. There'll be a little more with the best grant that we received. The priority list from facilities came into play, also affecting feeder systems. So you know, not wanting to shut down all four high schools all at once or a whole feeder all at once. I know that came into it. I know that schedule was put together before I came on to Todd, if there's any other factors that played into it, but those are the typical.
No, Tammy, I'd say you hit it pretty spot on, Mark. The only thing I would add is we did pull some of the larger projects up front. Because the longer you sit on some of those projects with escalation, you know, they're going to cost more down the road. So a lot of the push was on the larger projects to pull them up front as much as we could save on that cost escalation.
Okay, great, great. I I noticed for good news contingencies currently standing at $0. And just that's really good to see at this point. Just wanted to get your opinion on kind of. What what kind of a forecast do we have? How does the, how does the contingency look at this point to you guys for the next two or three years?
I think as a general statement, it looks good. And then again, closing out these 2020 projects and entering into the second year of the bigger projects. We'll know more about where we stand with that. I think Todd could probably speak to the process a little better of of how we'll go through this fall. Evaluating that and then coming to the board and the oversight committees to evaluate options for using that.
Okay, excellent. Last question from a community member. How do interesting, interested community members find out more about their school's DAG?
Sure, DAG committees are put together by the principals. So the best way the community can get involved is to contact the principal. Or you can, they can email me too. My information's out on the website and I'll make sure and make that connection for them. But the best way is to contact your principal and see if you can join the group.
All right, perfect. And thanks again for the presentation. So exciting to see all the progress that we're making.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Paul, did you still have questions?
This is real quick. I was kind of curious and I may be totally off on this, but it seems like material costs have been on the increase. Copper, lumber, other different things have been going up quite a bit. Is that true? And if it is, is that stretching our budgets? Is it impacting us in any way? And I don't know if Tammy or Todd can answer that.
We haven't realized that yet, but there is the concern that with the impact of COVID to labor and factories. And you know, all the ripple effect of what we use in our, every little widget we use in building a project, we're tracking that. I haven't seen the reports yet for this year to wrap up inflation and what materials are doing in the industry. But we'll definitely be looking at that as we start these next rounds of projects.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just have one quick question, Tammy. I've noticed as I drive by the administration building, the work on the. I guess that's the north side where the community college used to be. Can you just briefly say what's happening there? What's going on there? It's more for the community because I think I think I have an idea, but.
Sure. The new building that's being built out there is part of moving facilities over to the administration building. So the construction out there is actually the metal building showed up today. So they'll be setting up the shop for the vehicle maintenance. There's also the whole storage unit for outdoor services. And some of the trades, so and the new parking lot. So they had their run out, they'll be putting new asphalt out there too as part of the parking lot. But those are the two big buildings that you'll see added over there is for facilities.
So so kind of like a warehouse type building?
It'll be a metal building. Hopefully we pick the colors that'll match pretty well and and we'll re-landscape around it and it'll fit in beautifully.
Thank you. Dr. Schaefer.
So the only other just thing for the board to be mindful of. And I'm going to pull Gordon out of hibernation, even though he wasn't slated to present tonight. It wouldn't be a board meeting without Gordon presenting something financial. We are being impacted a bit around interest earnings, which obviously we're not spending. You know, we have money in reserve, we're holding it in contingency. Gordon, can you talk, there he is, can you talk high level Gordon, just about that impact?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. I'm Gordon Jones. Sadly missed member of the Chief Financial Officer. At the beginning of the project, we had to make assumptions on what interest earnings would be for the bond proceeds that we received. So we received all the bond proceeds and the premium that was achieved during the sale at one time. So that's quite a sum of money in the neighborhood of 175 million dollars. We've made some fairly conservative assumptions from an interest rate standpoint, but certainly certainly not conservative enough. Given the historic low rates that have taken place primarily as an impact of of COVID-19 as well. So right now, dollars are not earning as much in the in the investment vehicles that we have. But that is something that we're tracking closely. I'm working with Todd and team on what that impact could be. In fact, I just worked on it earlier this week. So there will be a negative impact there, but I don't anticipate at this time. For that to be terribly significant in the grand scheme of things in the overall scope. Because we are spending dollars down every month, we're spending dollars down from what was there. So we have less invested each month. So an impact, but not material enough at this point to be a a huge concern, I don't think.
Thanks, Gordon, I think. Any questions on that while we have them here? Okay, were we counting on that money in, was that like, where did that show up in our picture, in our big picture? Was that more in a contingency or how did that show up?
I'll provide a brief answer and then turn it over to Todd to provide a little more detail. But yes, it was essentially part of contingency that we had set aside to handle any of those. We had really double contingency. We had growth, increasing cost escalations anticipated in the projects. As well as just contingency for new things that came up, that might come up that we didn't anticipate. So it was built in there. What we didn't have built into the original projections were the funds that were. Received from the best grant that were just awarded here in the last couple of months, month or two. So we'll have a significant amount there that's able for redeployment, if you will, from from those proceeds. That don't have to be spent from bond proceeds. Todd, anything else there?
Great. Good. Okay, thank you. Mark Sutter, you have a question?
Yeah, do we, do we know the dollar amounts on those best grants at this time?
I bet Gordon does.
I bet Todd does. It's in the neighborhood of 5 million, I want to say, 5.8 million, I think in total. In that, in that ballpark.
That's exciting. That's great news. Again, congratulations.
Yeah, good work. All right, anything else bond related? Okay, thank you, Todd. Thank you, Gordon. Thank you, Tammy, for the update on the bond, bond projects. I know we're all really excited to be able to get in those buildings and 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 use them, right? Use the new, all the new stuff and the new buildings. Yeah, especially that Ferguson and TCC. I'd love for the community to be able to see inside that, like we've had the opportunity to do so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Let's go ahead and take, the next up is the. School-based health center update. So let's go ahead and take about nine minutes and come back at 7:50, 750. So make sure you turn off your mics and cameras. Just gonna give it one more second. All right, am I streaming, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are back from our break. Next item up is item eight point two, school-based health center update. And who have I got for that, Dawn or Todd?
You have got Todd and Charlie.
And Charlie, hi, Charlie.
So good evening again, Madam President, Board of Education and Dr. Schaefer. Tonight, we will give a brief update on the school-based health center located by Mary Blair and Conball. Okay, can you see that? All right, a little history. As or since the board has approved the school-based health center, Charlie will talk more about the community outreach that was conducted. So we've been in the midst of community outreach. We've also finalized contract services between Sunrise and TSD. And really what that did was define the scope of what each entity is doing, what we're providing compared to what Sunrise is providing. And we've also commenced and designed work at on the Conball site for construction of the facility. So a brief overview of the schedule is, as I will show you in the coming slides, the site work is complete. The portable building will be showing up end of mid-September, mid-end September for occupancy in October. And then Charlie is working with Sunrise to finalize the process to open the building to see patients. So as you will see, to orient everyone on the site, Conball on the north side is the main parking lot. The construction and the portable will sit what used to be in the dirt roundabout. As you'll see in the picture is now paved. We've done some other site modifications. And the portable will sit just to the north of this U shape that you see pictured here. So it'll sit between really where you see SSC and the U-shaped drive. It'll sit level with the U shape here. And you'll see there's, so this is looking from the south, this is looking to the north. You'll see that a couple of parking spots for it here. And it'll sit in this area here, really between Mary Blair and Conball. So as I mentioned, the site work is wrapped up. The portable, which we work with the users, will be shown up next month. And this is a general layout of the portable. It's a double Y, so it'll be coming in two pieces. And they are scheduled to set that late next month. Have inspections and then have it online first part of October. So you know, one of the pieces on this that I'll just mention real quick is we really worked with Sunrise and two or other facilities to see how this space functioned. So it could function properly for what we needed it for. So although it's a portable building, we were able to customize the inside of it to allow for allow for proper use of how we're going to use it. So from there, that is kind of the quick rundown of the facility, the site and where we're at. We've got all documents in place. I'll just mention real quick, too, the Sunrise has submitted to, got the HERSA approval. So that's the approval from the government saying that we're okay to open a health facility. So we've got that approval, the documents are in place. So now we move into getting ready to open the center. So from there, I will turn it over to Charlie and she'll give an update.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board and Dr. Schaefer. I'm Charlie Carter, the Executive Director for Student Support Services. And I'm very happy to give you an update on the progress that we have made for our school-based health center. First, I would like to give a heartfelt thank you to the members of our planning committee. Their work is done at this point. And they invested a lot of time and energy in participating on the committee to make the school-based health center a reality. And so we are very grateful to them. We'll be shifting into another committee. This will be the committee that provides some ongoing oversight. This committee will be meeting quarterly and typically includes the school-based health center staff, school principal or principals, our district nurse, our health aides and a parent and possibly a student as well. So I have some exciting news. Since the slides were created at the end of last week, we have a name at this point. And the center is actually going to be called the Sunrise Thompson Health Clinic. And the reason behind that name, according to Sunrise, is they wanted to show the partnership that exists. So that's the Sunrise Thompson. But they also wanted to reflect the size. And that's why they are calling this a clinic and not the center such as the Loveland Community Health Center. So on our marketing materials, we will have the name. But on some of our materials, there will also be a tagline that says, after the title, Sunrise Thompson Health Clinic, a school-based health center for student wellness. So now that we have a name, we will be able to move forward with creating that marketing plan. So Thompson will be collaborating with Sunrise. And as soon as we have a firm date for opening, we will start doing that advertising. As Todd said, the move-in is anticipated at the end of September. They will need about two weeks to get everything in order to meet all of the state regulations. And then once they are set up, they think that it will be about mid-October and they will be able to submit to open up for patients, which will be very exciting. And they are still planning to submit for a grant once it opens up. Until that time, Sunrise is covering all of the operating expenses. They need to complete the hiring process. They're almost done. At this point, we have Jason Valderrama, who is the Medical Director of the Loveland Community Health Center, who will also be overseeing our clinic. Amy Broder is the Certified Physician's Assistant, assistant who will be working there. I believe they have the medical assistants and currently are looking to hire the front desk personnel. So one of the things that we will need to start working on as soon as we're shifting back to in-person learning is to establish the protocols for how the school-based health center is going to be communicating with the health offices in the two schools adjacent to the center. And the other thing that we will need to do fairly early on is to establish the protocols that we will be using when we are addressing the coronavirus symptomology. And that will be a collaboration with Sunrise, Joe Vajansky and Barb Hartman. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Charlie. I was just thinking back to when this was first presented to us. I think it was at the Berthard, the meeting at Berthard High School, was that in April? And I think we were just all amazed that, you know, we were really pushing that we wanted this ready for this school year and pretty darn close. So congratulations to you guys and good work on that. This is really, this is a long time coming for the school district. So it's really exciting. I will let you guys have questions, but I have one that I want to ask before I forget it. What would be the, what would happen? You know, we're on remote learning now. What happens if that's extended and there isn't, we don't go back to in-person for longer than what we anticipate? How would that affect the usage or the ability of students to use the health center or the health clinic?
They will be open even if we continue with remote learning.
Great, that was the answer I wanted to hear. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Stu, I think I see your hand. Yes, Stu, go ahead.
You do see my hand, Lori. I have four quick questions for either Charlie or Todd. In looking at the diagram, it looks like there are five treatment rooms, is that right? Three, four physical exams, probably one dental, one behavioral health. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I think Charlie is correct no wrong, but as the health center gets established, they'll move into those different spaces. So it's really planned for, you know, throughout the year.
All right. I'm interested, too, on the days and the hours that the clinic will be open. Will it be open on weekdays? Will it also be open on weekends? What will be ours? And I'm asking this about regarding accommodating parent schedules and things like that.
At this point, I don't believe that they have established the specific hours of operation. But what I do know is from talking about the other school-based health centers in other districts is once they were up and running and they were able to determine the need, then they did expand the hours, two weekends. And they also extended them to holidays as well.
All right. Will they accept drop-ins or only people who have appointments?
They will accept drop-ins.
All right. And then my last question is, what's your notification plan? In terms of notifying local parents and students about the availability, when it's opening, what it's offering, et cetera? Can you give me a rough idea of what your notification plan is?
So that will be determined as part of our next steps. But I believe that they take a multi-dimensional approach. I think that they send out flyers and I believe that they put notices in the newspaper. I think that they use many forms of communication. They may, depending on the status of the coronavirus, they like to have a grand opening. Maybe they'll be able to do this outside with social distancing in order to bring people in so that they can see what is available to them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. Anybody else? Oh, Pam.
Just quickly, in the reporter Herald, a few months ago, I sent this to Dr. Mark. There was one of those, you know, this day in history, 10 years ago, the Thompson School District embarked on the process of starting a student-based health center. So it's been a full decade for this to get literally up and running. So thank you to everybody because it's been on the back burner for years and years and years. And this is critical for our community. I was curious, I'm guessing for things like dental appointments, those would have to have, I think it would be harder to do drop-in for dental than it would for maybe a medical, you know, quick check, something like that. Do you know how they're gonna organize that piece of it?
So I think for things that may be of a more urgent nature, they will refer to the Loveland Community Health Center.
Okay.
Or if there isn't that sense of urgency, then they will create appointments.
Okay, all right, awesome, thanks. And I look forward to the updates and keeping this moving forward. Thanks for all your work.
Thanks, Charlie. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, next up is policies. I think the rest of the agenda is policies. So the first set is item eight point three, the first reading of the Title IX policies. Let's see, who do I see? Do I see Bill?
You see Bill and Tom.
Tom, okay.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Severs, Chief Human Resources Officer. I also have Tom Tishera, who is our HR Director. And he's our Title IX Coordinator. So a lot of answers will be coming from Tom as we go through this. The purpose of the meeting is to provide the Board of Education information on the new Title IX regulations and discuss the proposed policy changes. Before getting into that, this ties into two parts of our STRIVE 2025, which is Focus Area Two, inclusive and supportive culture. So 2.1 and 2.2, ensure learning environments support a positive culture and climate and ensure all facilities are welcoming, safe and meet the needs of students, staff and communities. So the other purpose of really talking to the board is in May 2020, new Title IX regulations were implemented. The changes to Title IX go into effect as of August 14, 2020. The major changes that we'll talk, and they're weaved within our policies now, are includes new definitions, new decision-maker role, procedural and due process guidelines. So the new decision-maker role is entirely new. And this affects, you know, post-secondary as well. But the decision-maker, like Mr. Tom Tishera is our coordinator, you know, our Title IX coordinator. And he, you know, with the new policies is he can't be the decision-maker in it. You know, he does investigations, has his findings, but he's not the decision-maker. So there's a new person that takes over that decision-making role. And we'll kind of talk throughout the presentations. So the goal is really, there's seven board policies we want to talk about. We'll talk about the highlights of each one and then turn over the board for any questions. Because we like to do that where, that way where we talk about each policy and then move on to the next one and then move on to the next. Right, just so we don't get caught up with the seven different policies we have. So tonight, Tom and I will start with our first policy, which is JBB, it's sexual harassment. Yeah, I like to say there's no place in an organization for sexual harassment and violations of Title IX. So as you look at the policies, red, cross that red is we're omitting it and interjecting a new word. So his/her is replaced by their. But when you go down the sexual harassment defined, so we're taking out all the red crossed out and then we're inserting new policy there. So sexual harassment defined, I'll turn over to Tom, he can kind of talk about those three bullets.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Tom Tishera, Director of Human Resources with the district. The changes that are made to a few of the policies JBB included were a redefinition of sexual harassment and making sure that those were explicit in our policies for those three bullet points that are under the definition. And then also, some of the strikeouts were just cleaning up the previous wording that we had from the recommendations back in 2012. And the new Title IX regulations that came out this year have cleaned up some of that language to be very specific of what the definition of harassment will be. So this policy, JBB, specific in our student section of policies was updated accordingly. A few other very specific language pieces that you're going to see throughout the policies are terms redefined and terms retitled such as interim measures is termed, is taken out and turned into supportive measures. That'd be something listed on page two. There's also language surrounding the terms victim and alleged perpetrator that are taken out of language and retitled into alleged targets and to individual that has been accused of these actions so that there is less predisposed terms of a victim and a perpetrator and more due process put in place for both parties as they go through any of the situations here. There's a few more sections on JBB that were taken out. And this was in terms of the supporting documentation that's already in our other policies. So you'll just see some strikeouts of some specific language. And then the notice and training, again, you'll see in a few different sections where the training materials, part of the new regulations is that the training materials need to be made available to the public. So that is something that will need to be updated in our policies also.
In part of the presentation, we linked the website, so you can go to the website and see how Title IX is on there, you know, identifying who the coordinator is and also pointing out the policies. So that's something, working with legal and things we need to put in place. Questions?
Yeah, you want questions after each one?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I see Dawn had a hand up, so I'll go with Dawn first.
So my, my question is about this. It sounds as if we're, we're mimicking the, the federal law. How much leeway do we have to continue to do what we've been doing instead of changing to align with, with this new direction?
So we, we have zero choice here. You know, it's a mandate. This wording is recommended through CASB of changing this. But as of August 14th, when, when Tom starts investigating and, and the next level, the new policy has to be in place. And even the training that we have to provide our employees need to be in place as well. We go through public schoolwork and, and staff have to be trained, trained on it. So there isn't a choice with that. As of August 14th, we have to have this new policy in place.
And we've always followed the regulations in our policies. It's just that with the update of those regulations, that's why our policies would need to be updated. And there's a few procedural changes that we'll see in some of the further board policies. But some of the specifics in JBB are definitions and notice requirements that changed.
Thanks. If, who else had their hand up? Stu? Go ahead.
I have a question for you, actually a comment regarding JBB, and it's the same one, Bill and Tom, for GBAA and ACR2. Number one, under the title Sexual Harassment Defined, I think the wording is very confusing. When I first read it, in fact, I thought it doesn't make sense. And then as I reread it, I thought, oh, I think I understand what the point is, but I think the wording is confusing. So I'd like you to look at that particular statement and see if there's something that you can do in those three different policy areas to correct the confusion.
Stu, I'd really have to ask what the confusion is because when we go through legal, there isn't any confusion and there needs to be legal terms in it. The thing about JBB, the highlight of JBB is employees fall into this now. And, and that's a big one. When you see a school employee conditioning education benefits on participating in unwelcome sexual conduct, quid pro quo, that, that's something that's new and that's what's newly defined where it's students and it applies to employees now. So, you know, with employees right now, they, they can file a Title IX complaint against another employee or, or whatever takes place in the workplace. So that's, that's the part that's different too. So as far as the wording, I'd like to work with you specifically on what's confusing to you that we can kind of add to it. But that's, that's CASB wording. And when you start looking at other policies in other districts, they're, they're using that term, terminology now. And it's all, it's all what's in place.
Bill, that may well be, but I believe that number one is confusing. A school employee conditioning education benefits. That's a confusing combination of words. Now, I'm just saying, whether you need to talk to legal about this or whatever, I'd like you to do that. And if somebody can offer me an explanation as to why that's actually clear, I'm happy to accept that. But I find that a confusing statement in all three of the policies. So.
Yeah, it's, it's the same if a school employee says, hey, you know, I like sexual benefits for your grade. You know, I'll give you an A if, if you do this, or you talk to an employee and say, yeah, I'll, I'll do your lesson plans for you if you do X, Y, and Z for me. But yeah, still definitely go to legal and talk to legal and, and see, you know, this is the wording that's in place with CASB. And, you know, we could provide feedback at the next meeting.
I appreciate that. You can tell them the word that I have particular confusion with is conditioning. The way that conditioning is used. So enough said on that. Thank you for, thank you, Bill, for checking into that.
Thanks, Stu. If you want to turn your mic off, Stu, there you go. Thanks. We're getting some feedback too. So maybe, Tom, you might need to turn off if you're not speaking as well. So thank you. Thanks, guys. Who else? I saw another hand somewhere. Was it somebody else? Mark Seder. Okay, Mark.
Just wanted to say that I had two questions about this particular policy. And Tom, you did a great job during your presentation. You answered both of them. So thank you very much and, and good job. Let's keep that level of quality going as we continue the presentation.
I, I have one question as well. And I don't know Bill or Tom who, who wants to answer. But it looks to me, and, and it could be just me reading this, but it looks to me like the new definition section, which replaced the, basically the three bullet points up above that are redlined out. So number one, two, three, submission to blah, 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 those things. It looks like the new definition is harder to meet than the old definition. Am I misinterpreting that or? It looks like it's setting the bar higher because before it said, such conduct, like number three, such conduct has the purpose or effect of adversely affecting a student's ability. Whereas number two down below, it says unwelcome conduct that a reasonable person would determine is so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it effectively denies equal access. I mean, that sounds to me like fairly high bar.
Well, let me address that.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
There's, there's a few. So one thing, our, a lot of our policies were updated in 2012. The definition at the time was, was interpreted and put into these policies not as specific as this regulation that just passed this time. There have been a few case law statements that have been put in place since 2012, but nothing that affected the actual Title IX regulation until May of this year. This new definition is based off of a handful of case law, but most specifically, like number three, was based off of that Clery Act that was, I believe, 2017 that specifically defined dating violence and stalking that was not spelled out prior to the new regulation this year. So that's where, yes, there's some very specifics that now will meet the requirement of what the definition of harassment is. Conditioning educational benefits has always been part of it. And, and you can see the number one lined out before then is an implicit or a term of condition of a student's participation. That, that's always been there. That's just a different way of how they wrote it this time. And then the number three has always been severe, pervasive, or objectively offensive, excuse me. And now they added the word and. So absolutely, Lori, up to interpretation, it's much harder to be and with three terms than it is to be or in terms of proving what, how sexual harassment is defined.
Thanks. I don't like the answer, but I don't know if there's anything I can do about it.
Lori, it's starting to take the gray out of it because since 2012, a lot of lawsuits, you know, forced the change, right? And if you think about the Title IX Coordinator is not making the decision and there's a decision-maker, it, it's a lot of time in these cases that they find in favor of the suit is, is because a judgment was used. Like someone saying, well, stalking really isn't sexual harassment, right? So they're trying to take out the decision-making in, in organizations and saying, hey, this is what you have to follow. Because at times, you know, people think sexual harassment is one way, but, but there's other things that are, are involved with it too. And domestic violence and dating violence impacts a student's education at the school. If it happened outside of the school, that trickles in, especially with so, social media harassing ties in too. And it really impacts a student's learning when something like this happens.
Yeah, thanks. Anybody else? Questions on this? All right, next one.
Okay, we have GBAA. As you can see, there's the same wording for sexual harassment defined on page one. And that is the, the major addition to GBAA.
Yeah, again, the CASB documents included a definition into the G policy. G policies are personnel policies, so it's just spelled out what that definition looks like. And then also the hostile environment was part of the new definition or a new wording that needed to be put in the GBA.
That makes sense. Anybody questions on this one? That seems pretty straightforward. Want to move on to the third one?
Okay, so this is our AC policy, nondiscrimination equal opportunity. As you read that, I'll turn it over to Tom to discuss the changes.
So our AC policy delineates a lot of specific points that you can see in the headings. Number one, the beginning paragraph is a new definition. The CASB document was very similar to this, but what we did was coordinate the definition that was updated in our equity policy to reflect the same definition for unlawful discrimination based off of a person's, and then all of the specifics there. So one of the things you'll see in all of the policies where there is specific wording around what we do not discriminate against, all of those should be consistent now in these seven policies. And then also with, in conjunction with the equity policy. The other specifics in there are other regulation specifics that were put in place that have to do with orientation, sexual orientation, hairstyle, and race, and specific callouts that we have in new case law and in the new Title IX regulation that includes some of the discriminatory wording. So just to be consistent, they're put in here in our nondiscrimination policy. There's also, like Bill had spoken of before, a, a new choice of taking he's and she's out of the specifics based off of new gender equity and pronoun use. So there should be they in, or they're in most of those cases. You can see specifically also unlawful is put into all of these discriminatory words because that's really what we're protecting students and employees from is any unlawful discrimination. And so that's why that policy change was there. And if you notice on the, the next page, there's a few more specifics to English language. So one of the specifics that we will have to do after these are approved is have a notice disseminated in a person's own language for English language, if they're limited English language skills. Again, that's part of new regulations that are put in place. And then the same definitions under harassment is prohibited. The same update of all of the targets and unlawful in the next pages that you can see. And so a lot of those other changes are some of the things we've spoken about before of changing the new wordings based off of those new definitions that we've been discussing throughout these three policies. Are there any questions on AC?
Dawn, you have a question?
Well, you mentioned the equity policy, and I have to say that most of my concerns and questions with this whole batch have to do with how this no longer aligns with our equity policy by in fact making it more restrictive for us to understand what discrimination is, has me concerned that we are no longer creating the space we need to educate people if they feel harassed, if they feel targeted against. And so I'm, I am concerned about that. And then I do have a follow-up question, but take one at a time.
So if I could just ask for a little more clarity, what, what you're stating is that these policies maybe feel more constrained in terms of how we are defining discrimination?
Uh, yes. They're very, very tight. They're following a legal definition instead of I have concerns about how someone treated me and I would like to have someone help me through that.
Yeah. So the, the policies that we've updated are in response to this regulation that is been updated. The, the overall concerns for students' well-being or any discrimination situations can be looked at in a variety of ways by school officials or by myself as the Title IX Coordinator. As a Title IX Coordinator specifically, there are sexual harassment key points to look at for definitions and what is investigated and what is determined as sexual harassment that are part of that regulation. I, I, I don't know if that would be a philosophical conversation or if that's something to, to, if you want to discuss that. The, the reality is that the, the complaints that could come forward by a student or a family based off of what they feel is discrimination are not limited by any of our policies. Those can still be looked at, investigated, and put measures in place to help a student. Only if they elevate to the level of sexual harassment would they follow strict guidelines of our investigation policy for Title IX investigations or Title VI for any racial discriminations that would come up based off of the definition that we have in these policies. So I hope that explains a little of the thinking and why the policies are written the way they are. It, it may not answer the, the full philosophical question of these are limiting or not limiting at this point.
I, yeah. So my follow-up question then is, since we have no choice in the wording of these, why are we voting on it? Because if it's, if it's the law, why do we have to have our own policy? And what happens when we don't vote for it? Because this is repugnant.
So I'm going to jump in here because I'm struggling with some of the same, with some of the same stuff Dawn is. I see some of this is, like I mentioned before on the first one, is like tightening and making it more specific. And I get part of why that is, but I also am troubled by the fact that the word unlawful has been, and, and this isn't on you guys. I know where this is coming from. This is, this is a federal regulation. I get that. But it bothers me that, you know, for instance, all employees who witness unlawful discrimination. Well, what if it doesn't rise to the level of unlawful? It's just discriminatory, period. Because we're human beings and, and we don't do that, which is why we have our new equity policy. So I think, a couple of things, I think. One is, I think the question is, can we, I think as board members, we may not understand fully the difference between the titles, like Title IX and Title VI and what, what those federal laws say, and what latitude we have as a board within our district to say, okay, that's the minimum of what we have to do. What more can we do? Where can we go further? Where can we be loose? further? Where can we be looser? So I I think that's what I'm struggling with, Dawn, and and I don't mean to take words out of your mouth or put words in your mouth. But I see Pam nodding, and now I see Paul raising his hand. So I'm gonna go to Paul.
I would just reiterate like to to add to that. I have always been told when it comes to legal matters that you can be you can not be less restrictive.
Right.
Right? That it's a bare minimum. And what we're asking for is to say, well, uh you know, on our level, we want to be able to to do more. And and I've never heard before that you have to you have to do this kind of thing. So I am confused by that. This is the first time I'm hearing that uh from an HR background.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to make sure I'm framing this in my mind correctly. So I guess the way I'm seeing it is that these policies are intended to answer a legal question. No more, no less. It's a legal one. Anything outside of the legal definition would be covered under our equity policy. So we do have policies in place that would cover any situation. Neither one of them are all encompassing, but we do have policies in place to deal with a legal one if it's a legal question or a non legal one if it's not a legal question. Am I not understanding that correctly or is that Bill and Tom kind of how you are seeing it?
Yeah, that's how we're seeing. I totally understand the frustrations a little bit with the wording and and seeing the big change. Uh all all districts are suffering w- with this a little bit because they're scrambling to figure out, okay, so so wh- what does this really look like now and how are those changes? At at the at the college level, the thing that the colleges have to do i- is they have to have a Title IX hearing. So if a victim is claiming Title IX is sexual harassment, you know, colleges have to have the hearing where they hear the victim, they hear the perpetrator. Uh there's there's a lot of intense n- next levels uh that isn't impacting, you know, K-12 yet, but uh you know, there's some things in here, but but the thing I'd highlight too is um, you know, like n- ninety percent of these concerns will be dealt with at the school level. Right? So with the new policy a- in schools, as far as it rising to district level, uh you know, as far as our cases, you know, we'll see an increase of our cases and concerns, and it's educating the public if there's a concern or what the next steps are and how to report that and how, you know, once it gets reported, you know, that's the part that we work with legal just to make sure we're in compliance with the new Title IX regulations, that we're doing everything right. And there's layers of of what that investigation needs to look like. Uh, just wording from like interim measures to supportive measures. Uh, that that's a big change and wording there, supportive measures. And wh- what does that look like? So what do you put in place when a victim comes forward a- and says something had had happened? What what's the supportive measures you put in place right away? So I I totally understand where the questions are coming from. And uh the point about i- if we don't have a choice and why are we approving it, I I I totally get that.
What what's the what's the timeframe? I I would like to know what the timeframe is on this. Is that Dr. Schaefer?
Well, uh, Bill, go ahead and answer that, and then I have a suggestion.
Yeah, so the timeframe is, you know, as far as us changing our policies, uh we uh we have to be in compliance by August fourteenth, meaning when we start investigating, we we can investigate under the 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 former rules and procedures. Like you have to have these new procedures in place. And and when we make a decision by that decision maker, and if there's there's an appeal to it and it turns into an OCR complaint, then then when OCR comes in, the first thing they look at is they look at process. So they'll say, so as a district, did you follow the new process? So if we don't follow the new process, then we're out of compliance a- and there's a suit against the district. And there's huge huge liability on our end that we didn't follow the process. So for us with the timing, like like it's horrible timing. I'm just saying horrible timing because it implemented in May. You know, at the in the schools in not in session anymore, and then you have the summertime, right? And the work to do this and implement our policies took some time. And then all of a sudden, from May when they put it in place to August fourteenth, they're saying by August fourteen. So we're trying to do the best we can where, you know, we had a discussion about this, you know, a- as long as we move forward with our investigation under these new rules, you know, we can work with the board to kind of explain more.
Dr. Schaefer, go ahead.
So I am wondering um if we might, because it seems like there's a number of board members that have some extended converse, you know, some just a quite a few questions around this. I would love to invite legal to attend maybe a working session so that we can have a real time dialogue around this. Now, um, this is federal law, right? So I think, you know, I I don't think, you know, as as Bill said, we will be out of compliance if we don't follow the law, and it sounds like we as a as a board or some board members have some real questions around this uh in terms of how it uh harmonizes with our existing equity policy, other practices, beliefs, et cetera. So I want to make sure that we're responsive to board members because I think there needs to be a a good and deep and clear understanding. Um, and the only way we could probably provide that is to probably have someone from legal just meet with us as a as a board. Uh, we obviously have a working session tomorrow, so that's not gonna work. And so I look at September seventeenth as our as our next opportunity to do a working session. And I'm wondering what the the boards uh what the board thinks of that.
So, Dr. Schaefer, would we need to have a vote on these before or we're bound by the law regardless what our policies say?
So what I, yeah, well, so HR as of five days ago will be following this uh to remain in compliance. Um, so my, you know, I think because this was technically a first read, our plan was to then circle back with the board uh September second to ask for formal adoption. Um, I I mean, we'll check to see if, you know, I think HR can continue to follow the new policy guidance. Uh, it's more than guidance, the law. Um, and then as a board, we can maybe meet with legal on the seventeenth to further discuss.
I I would really like us to have a discuss, because I know I can tell that there's three of us at least that are um confused or concerned, I guess, about this. And maybe, you know, I know CASB had a webinar on the ti- on the Title IX changes, but I missed that one. Did any? Did any of the rest of you do that? No? Rats. That would have been a that would have been a good one to do, but I I couldn't get it done. Um, so I'm wondering if if we can if we can do um some sort of something at the September um working session. I know it it would be after you would expect us to take a vote on it. Barb, did you want to add something or no? Okay, okay.
Well, I was just wondering, what was the deadline? Is it August thirty first, like?
I think it was the fourteenth. I think August fourteenth. We're already past.
So I mean, even a two by two would really help me dig into this a little bit. If we don't want to wait to, I feel like waiting till September seventeenth is, I well, I guess at this point the law is the law, but um I'm very frustrated, you know, by this being dictated to by this, and I know that's what the feds do and um. So I I do think we need a little deeper dive for at least a few of us who want to dig in a little bit more. I would greatly appreciate more conversation and information. And if it's legal, fine. If it's Dr. Schaefer with it and Dr. Severs and and uh to Tom to share with, you know, doing two by twos. I would appreciate any or all of those things.
Well, I I was just gonna add, Pam, that if we wanted to get legal and we didn't want to wait till the seventeenth of September, we could do it as a special meeting, and it could be more than, it wouldn't just need to be two of us. We could do as many of us as want to come and notice it. And that way, you know, just make it an added meeting. What do you think, Dr. Schaefer? What do you think the what the rest of you? Um, who who all would like, just maybe a thumbs up or a show of hands? Do you all want more information on this or more guidance on this? I mean, again, it's you know, there's not much we can do about it, but okay, I think we all want to understand it better. All right, so that's your answer on that, Dr. Schaefer. Um, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the big thing, uh you know, what Pam was saying was a great idea because at times, you know, we uh we need to go through examples, right? Right? I think when you go through a scenario, you'll you'll totally understand why why we have policies in place like that. And and I think that's helpful if we take a scenario, you know, start off with what that could look like and then get into the policies. Because I think at times we get tied in the policy as much when things are being handled at the building as well. And we just ask compliance, like Tom as a compliance officer is just that, a compliance to make sure that we're in compliance with policies and regulations and federal uh, you know, law.
Dr. Schaefer.
So what I will do is I will ask Laura Lee to poll the board um tomorrow to find a date and time that will work. What I'd like to do then is have this special meeting prior to September second, which would be the the date that we would, you know, ask for formal approval, but allow then enough time in real time to have questions answered, just a deeper dive uh with attorney. Is that is that acceptable?
I I just want to say thank you um for helping us do that and to make this. I mean, I realize it's it's urgent at a time when everything seems to be on fire. So I appreciate that. I also do want to take a second also to thank uh D- Dr. Severs and and Tom for all your hard work. Because regardless of my thoughts about it, um I can see that you worked really hard on this, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate how you're answering our questions. Um, so thank you for that. Um, it it is not a any any questions on your professional abilities at all. I I appreciate what you've done to help us get here.
So does that sound okay, board? Uh, we'll get polled and yeah. Okay, then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna let you zoom through the rest of them to get us through these Title IX related, and uh we can then keep our questions pretty much for the special meeting. So Bill, back to you, and I think we're on Korean number four.
Yes, moving to number ACR. Yeah, we should be on ACR, the fourth document. Um, ACR is actually a regulation that we had updated last November. There were some procedural things that we felt uh needed to be updated at that time. And so the new majority of this are very specifics to the definitions there at the bottom of the first page. And then also um some of the uh specifics on the third page that have um procedural specifics in there. And that's another um part of the regulation that did um change. There are some procedural uh implications of written notification when a complaint is uh filed of um the same process basically for investigations. I- it looks very similar from the previous reg- regulation. And the 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 next steps for this will be um having an evidence phase when the investigation report is actually completed and providing the draft document to both parties so that they can provide more input on what um steps maybe did not get investigated or they can ask any specific questions of each other that I, as the investigator, would pose to each of the parties so that then I can include that in the next phase of the uh investigation. And then also that uh new um role of the decision makers always been defined in previous regulations, but in this regulation, it was delineated from the actual Title IX coordinator or investigator. Uh, larger districts and universities have had a delineation of this for years. So they saw it as best practice to take the investigative part of a Title IX situation and turn it all over to somebody that um has the experience to be able to render a decision based off of all the evidence put together. And uh the appeal process is uh specific to um just new addresses and uh phone numbers and things like that that were um updated for the Colorado aspect of the office and the federal office. The fifth document is uh ACR two. And this is a brand new policy that we do not um currently have. That was recommended by CASB as um the procedures for Title IX for sexual harassment investigations. And basically, it is a definitions sheet of who the complainant, decision maker, investigator, respondent, all those specific things. Um, another direction of the terminology leaning more towards legalese with complainant and respondent. Those were not the terms used previously in the Title IX regulations. Um, the uh phone numbers, addresses, and emails of myself and Dr. Snyder that are the decision maker and the Title IX coordinator. And then specifics on where to and how to file a complaint and how the investigation proceeds in a general sense on page two and three. Um, all the definitions of what the decision looks like, how that's supposed to take place, the appeal process. And then again, the same notice and training notification from the very first policy um that we add here. And again, this is a brand new policy, so that can be discussed further on on why and what we need to use at at the further meeting. The sixth document is uh AC which is our notification of who our compliance officers are. Um, this has always been the case. We just updated this um because uh in the new uh case law and policies, they um asked that we put emails, um email addresses on there. So typically, we've left these um without mine and Charlie's name on it, with just our titles. But since our emails were gonna be provided, I felt like it was moot to not put our names on here. So just as an FYI, every time myself or her and the next people change titles and new people come in, these policies will have to be updated accordingly. And that's really the major um changes to that. The outside agencies are very specific to that last policy we saw at the end. And then also that same definition that we've seen repeated at the bottom of the first page. The seventh uh doc- document is ACE two. This is our complaint form that we use for um a variety of things. The the schools ask folks to put their complaints in in writing specifically for either myself or Charlie as the compliance officers, but then also um for a variety of things that sometimes don't rise to the level of a Title IX or Title VI. Title VI is racial discrimination. And so the um just to update on the top part, the definition, and then again, those same unlawful and um a few s- minor details that needed to be changed on our compliant complaint form that were in the CASB forms.
Okay, thank you. That's a lot. That's a lot of uh.
That was a big, big breath of air.
Yeah, that was a lot of them. Um, so, yeah. So we will, thank you guys, and and Tom and Bill, um as Dawn said, I, you know, we know you put a lot of work into this, and we know that that your hands are tied on a lot of this. Um, but we, I think we have questions that we want to understand, at least for me. I want to understand in my own, in my own head, in my own heart, what all this means. And since it's all so legalized, you know, you get yourself tied up in knots on it. So um I think once we have that special meeting, I think hopefully we'll get our questions answered and we'll feel better about it. So, Dr. Schaefer, do you have what you need? Hold on a second, Bill. I got you, Bill and Tom. Dr. Schaefer, you're.
Yeah, I've got what we need. I'm uh I'm trying to uh I'll work with uh legal team and then we'll uh float some dates.
Okay, thank you. And Bill?
Yeah, I think the highlight I want to tell too is it it being so new that different legals have different opinions on it. Right? And CASB has a different opinion than other legals. So i- it's just it's just interesting where everybody's at because their interpretation is a little different. So so there might be a tweak here or there, but 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 the biggest thing for us is like we're going into with this policy thing, okay, so this is what we have in place. But what happens when we get a case? Be because I could tell you when we get a case, first thing we're gonna do is work with legal and say, okay, guy guide us through it just for the first one to make sure we're in compliance, because the worst thing you can do i- is not being compliant for something you did. Because you spend an enormous amount of time, right, uh within all those days that are required. And then you can get an OCR complaint, and then OCR complaint will come in and review everything you did. So that's why for us, you know, for the first cases we have, we definitely want to le- work with legal and say, okay, this is what our policy is. What what are additional changes we need that maybe was an oversight? And and I think that's the one that's really important to know too that once you get that first case, you you might not see something until you go through it, and it's like, okay, so did we do X and Y? A- and you know, did we do everything that we needed to do? So that's the part that working with legal, a lot on that i- is gonna be. And and even in the same l- legal department, you'll have different lawyers that have a different interpretation too. So, yeah, I appreciate that, and we'll work the hardest we can for. So, yeah, I appreciate that and we'll work the hardest we can for the board to provide more understanding around this.
Just, just as a little background knowledge, I can say since the May regulations came out, there's been a lot of scrambling by. All of the agencies, federal, state and any local that um, work in the Title IX realm or redefine any of these. And uh, there's been tons of webinars, tons of uh, informational sessions that we've had. And um, like Bill was just stating, there's different levels of interpretation and then there's some very specific. Um, parts of the regulation that needed to be met and never in the history of Title IX, much less any kind of regulations like this. Has a change been made in that short amount of time? Much less all the problems that we've been going through since May. And so that will definitely be part of the interpretation you'll have from attorneys to state that. Yeah, this is a scramble to get this updated, to get these documents out. And then here's the, the forms that should be in place for this um, August fourteenth deadline kind of a thing. And so it's understandable, like, like we said, me and Bill don't take any offense to any of the questions or any of that stuff. It's our responsibility to update the board accordingly and that's why those documents look the way they do. And we both look forward to further discussion because it just means more learning on our parts on what is needed for the district.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's really nice to work with educators because. You understand how to educate us and, and where we're coming from. Stu, did you have a question or a comment? You're muted, there you go.
I'm here, yeah. I have a question, uh, it's not philosophical and it's, it doesn't seem like it would make sense. To me to wait until this session to ask it. Tom, did you say uh, in regard to the names of the current staff that are in uh, six ACE and ACR two? That at the point that someone else fills that role? That the um, information can be updated, so it won't, it won't have to come back to the board to be revised. It's not a revised policy, it'll just be an update.
So yeah, that'll be the board's uh, determination at the time. What, what I was specifically saying is that in the past, we've kept. Uh, names out of the policies. Just have left titles of, of employees. And so with the need for us, uh, for me and Charlie to have our email addresses on the policy notifications. And on the websites, we figured there's no reason not to have the name on there because both of those will have to get changed. When there's a new director of human resources or a new executive director for student services.
Sure, I, I understand what you're saying. I was just asking for clarification. We're talking about an update. Not a policy coming back to the board to revise, to be revised just because somebody's name has changed. Is that correct?
Yes, that, I, I think the typical um, information that the board gets based off of an update like that would be something. That would be informational, that wouldn't necessarily come to a vote in.
Okay.
Board meeting, yes, in the future.
That's my question, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, so I'm going to put this one to bed. And we're going to move on to the next item, which I guess is still Tom and Bill, or at least Bill anyway. Which is eight point four, human resources COVID nineteen update. And this was just something that I asked for. I wanted us to have a clearer idea of, of how we are handling our employees around. Um, their concerns around if a student should test positive or a family member, what happens if? Uh, you know, a whole school needs quarantining, how do we do that? Or how do I get my job assignment changed if I'm concerned about? The infection, so Bill.
President, School Board, uh, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Severs, Chief Human Resources Officer. You know, so the recommendation is that the board receive an update by human resources on COVID nineteen and TSD employees. I think that was a great opening. Uh, before I get into the presentation, you know, there, there, there's a team behind this presentation, so. Yes, tonight I'm the voice to kind of present it, but uh. Let's start off with Todd Pecone's team and Joe Vajansky, you, the work they're doing with the connection with the county and all the meetings they've gone through and. Creating protocols, you know, from the HR side, the benefit and risk team. You know, Dor, Dorothy Barnhart is our risk manager, uh, benefits and risk manager and, and the amount of work a- and education that she puts in. It is, is huge. Then going to Denise Absalom, who works with workers comp claims and, and works with the worker comp side. And then we have Robbie Stockwitz i- is who we consider our FMLA experts, so that's part of the presentation too. And then A- Anne Hinkle is our insurance person, so there's a team behind this. Making sure that we're helping employees through, through, through these uh. You know, challenging times, like the unknown is probably the biggest thing, but you know, as far as the education that we've provided staff and the support. You know, I think it's a great opportunity to really go, go over that. So part of strike twenty twenty five, it gets into inclusive and supportive culture, so that two point two. Ensure all facilities are welcoming safe, safe is the highlight and meet the needs of students, staff and community. Uh, the other part, the, so the discussion, you know, before I go over the PowerPoint, the discussion will. You know, I'll start off with uh, the know about COVID nineteen, we'll talk about employee rights. FFRCA, you'll hear that acronym a lot and that stands for the Families First Coronavirus Act. Qualifying reasons for FF-CRA, employees at higher risk, underlying medical conditions, Amer, you know. ADA, vulnerable populations and employee support. So I kind of go, go, go through that a- and uh, talk about each part. Alright. So to know about COVID nineteen, you can kind of go through the bullet points, I thought it'd be good, you know, the source on CDC. And we pull a lot of information. You know, to educate everybody a- and we just don't make up these things, i- it's, it's based off of some law, it's based off of some wording. So we'll kind of highlight that, but you know, I won't read all of it. You know, COVID nineteen symptoms can range from mild or no symptoms to severe illness and, and I think that's important to know. As well as we start dealing with uh. You know, the impact it will have in our schools a- and with our, in our staff. Employee rights, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA requires employers to provide their employees. With paid sick leave and expand family medical leave for specified reasons related to COVID. So that's a related COVID, I'll talk more about that. Provisions for FF-CRA. A, you know, they apply from uh, April first through December thirty first of twenty twenty. So that, that's something to think about uh, by December thirty first. You know, some of this support might change, it depends what the government plans to do with the next steps. So the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Uh, just to highlight, it's up to two weeks, eighty hours or part-time employees, two week equivalent. Of paid sick leave based on the higher of the regular rate of pay. So that's an accrued cost by the district, something that we would need to provide. And, and employees entitled to take leave related to COVID if the employee is unable to work, included unable to telework. So the key word is telework because you can continue working and this doesn't affect you. Meaning if you're in quarantine, uh, because be, because somebody in your family was exposed or somebody at work was exposed. Or they put a building in the quarantine, then uh, that telework, if you can perform. Uh, your job duties from remote, then that's what telework is. And I think that's important to understand too. Uh, be, because FFRC or FF-CRA doesn't apply to everybody. So there's six reasons for qualifications that we look at and Dorothy does a great job around this. Uh, is subject to federal, state or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID nineteen. Number two is has been advised by healthcare provider to self-quarantine related to COVID. And then experiencing COVID nineteen symptoms as a seeking a medical diagnosis. So the highlight from this one, then this is how COVID impacts you as an employee, though it's the you, right? So, so when I get into the next ones, qualification reasons for two-thirds pay, four, five and six, six doesn't apply as much. Uh, four is, is caring for an individual subject to. An order described in one self-quarantine as described in two and then five is caring for his or her child whose school or place of care. Is closed due to COVID nineteen related reasons. So four and five have to do with COVID impacting other people than you. That would be your immediate family, care, caregiving, uh, things like that. And then uh, employees at a higher risk, you know, employees with an underlying medical condition listed by CDC. Um, you know, I've got some, some of these things that I'll talk to you about. Uh, but those at a higher risk is a very illness from COVID nineteen. And then the second bullet is you're not required to inform the district and I think that's one of those things to understand too. Is if you're looking for benefits or through FF-CRA, it, it has to be a medical diagnosis. Right? Because you can't just call, hey, I was exposed. I- it's, you're getting tested or the county i- is providing information to the district. So however, if you wish to request accommodations because you are at greater risk of serious complications, you need to contact HR. So us coming out of the gate, talking to our employees, you know, if you're falling in these criteria, you know, ADA, CDC. Uh, tho- those are things that we need to give medical reasons for. And then underlying medical conditions identified by the CDC, cancer, chronic kidney disease. Uh, you know, immunocompromised state, obesity, serious heart conditions. Type two diabetes, sickle cell disease, you know, those are de- defined by CDC. And then underlying medical conditions that might be an increase. So you know, there's not enough research, there's research, but there's not enough research, but CDC. Basically said, this might be an increased risk, so that kind of adds to it. So a- asthma, hypertension, liver disease, pregnancy, smoking, type one diabetes. Ne- neurological conditions such as dementia, tho- those are all qualifiers that would put you into that underlying medical conditions. And, and would qualify through CDC. So, so when employees contact us, because we had the forms and we sent out to staff, you know, we, oh, we received a- accommodations. Uh, you know, there's a certain amount that we're, or we're looking into uh, supporting our, our, our staff. And then ADA's, Americans with Disability Act, you know, there's ADA law, Americans with Disability Act came law in nineteen ninety. It's a civil rights law that prohibits discrimination against individuals with disabilities on all areas of public life. Including jobs, school, transportation and all public and private places that are open to the general public. So that's the definition there. So ADA, I definitely want to give you some qualifiers because there are different qualifiers too that don't fall into the bullets I put. Uh, you know, having a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits a major life activity, that, that kind of explains the qualifier right there. And then things like chronic stress and anxiety disorders is ADA qualifier. Clinical depression, ADHD, uh, deafness, blindness would be ADA qualifier. So I point that out because when, when we work with medical and, and we get the reasons why an accommodation needs to put in place. Those are qualifiers we look at. I- it's, it's not as if an employee comes and say, hey, I'm, I'm scared to return back to work. You know, we'll help them through that, but what qualifiers do you have for us to give you, you know, some type of accommodation? You know, a reasonable accommodation. And then the other part is a vulnerable population, so Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services using that information. So it gives you an idea, you know, if you don't qualify for ADA, if you don't qualify through C- CDC. Right? Because those are two, and then you have vulnerable populations that we need to look at as well. So o- older adults would be a vulnerable population, those with underlying medical conditions. Racial and ethnic minorities, low income children, homeless and uninsured would fall into that vulnerable population. And then as far as employee support, so it's reasonable accommodations and we're doing everything that we can to support our staff with reasonable accommodations. You know, i- if, i- if it isn't a reasonable accommodation, then people can apply for leave through FMLA. But, which uh, attaches to FF-CRA as well. But you can kind of see what the qualifiers are there. And then, you know, there are some people that might just say. Well, you know, I don't want to come back to work, we work with them with a personal leave or request. You know, wh- what's the reason for that? And then we work with them. And then the other thing that we really do is we work with supervisors as far as the reasonable accommodation through HR or supervisor. So a huge, huge kudos to supervisors uh, that we've been working with. Uh, as far as providing a- a- accommodations and small accommodations could be PPE, you know, staff could request. Fed shields where, wh- which we provided, so a lot of accommodations that came in at the beginning. You know, a re- a redefining PPE and what, what's going to be supported in district, what's going to be brought in. And the other thing, gloves too, having gloves, accommodation might be, hey, I need gloves every single day. So working with that employee and making sure that, you know, instead of here, here, here's some gloves for the week. Or for the month, we're making sure that we have enough support for them. So at this time, I'll, I'll, I'll stop right there and answer any question. I- it's, it's a huge web of complications. You know, unless you're dealing with this day in and day out and you're taking the accommodations. But we do the best we can to reach out to employees, talk to them personally, you know, call them on the phone. Uh, you know, after a decision's made, we're sending emails confirming things. You know, I feel we're doing the best we can to support our staff. A- and, you know, we're here to help. So as far as the quarantine part, now I'd ask Todd to answer some of those questions too if they come out. Uh, but, but it's really document, 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 document. And making sure if somebody is in quarantine and if they're coming off of quarantine, you kind of have a progress monitor within the district. Just to make sure that, okay, so do you have any other signs, you know, are, are you able to be released back to work? So it's kind of the HR side that takes over, you know, m- uh, make sure dealing with employees uh, the best we can.
Thanks, Bill. Questions? Pam?
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm amazed by, you guys have had so much thrown at you in the last few months. So I just have to first of all say thank you for um, handling everything so professionally and educating us. Uh, so well, um, so when uh, let's say an employee or a student. Um, has all the major symptoms of COVID, but their test comes back negative. And that happens a lot. Um, there are, I, well, the data is starting to come in, there's a lot of false. Um, false negatives out there, more, more false negatives than false positives. So what happens then? Um, what, you know, they have every symptom under the book, but it's like, oh no, you don't have COVID. Well, they, they do. Most likely.
Well, yeah, yeah, okay, so I'll just say this real quick, uh, you know, at times like. Everybody thinks the symptoms they have are related to COVID and, and most likely, right? Uh, but it could be the flu, it's the same thing with the swine flu. You know, like uh, years back where, you know, when you get intested, they really didn't test it because they said it's the swine flu. So the thing that we work with is we work with an employee, you know, we'll answer any questions, we'll guide them to. You know, they need to get a medical, but, but, but really i- it's using your leave, like we. You know, there's, there, there's FF-CRA qualifications, but, but really the district provides basically a day of leave a month. And after two sixty employee, there's vacation days. So we highly recommend, you know, if you're not positive for COVID, okay. That closes one avenue, but here's the other avenue that we give you. Like here's, like you have, you know, if you're a teacher, you have nine annual days, you, use annual days. The other thing if, is if your annual days are up, then you can have access to your accrued leave. Uh, we'll, we'll do everything to support staff, but, but when it gets to that, there, there's. And there's like different banks of, of leave and there's different options. You know, I'd say there's like ten different options to support our staff during this time where it's just not the absolute and binary where it's yes or no. It's yes, no, maybe, hey, so here's something to think about, right? That, that's, that's what the human is in human resources, right? I- it's all about human capital and we really want to make sure our, our staff is supported, like, like that's the bottom line. So i- if we don't have an answer, we get an answer. So, so that's a long drawn out answer, but there is support for them, you know, to take leave.
Thanks, Bill. Um, I have one other question that i- is more HR rather than um. More specific to our district rather than along these uh, federal guidelines. Um, if there's an employee who prefers to. Teach remotely, are we giving them that option? Like um, for the online school, so how, how do teachers get placed in that?
Great, great, great question. So Laura, it's a great question. I'll try to dance around a little bit because I don't want to give confidential information out. And I don't want people to think, you know, everybody who's teaching online has an accommodation and that's not the truth. Uh, so, so basically i- it's reasonable accommodations and if we have a position available that we can transfer somebody into. And that's a reasonable accommodation. And if we have a position available that we can transfer somebody into, and that's a reasonable accommodation. So as, as far as the online numbers and the work that we've been doing around that, you know, we have less than 3,000 kids online, you know, for the classes. So we have, you know, at the high school, about 852 kids, middle school, 642. At the elementary, about 1,200 kids. So, so it's a 41 ratio that we're using the staffing. So, so we've been the last week, working endless hours with staffing. And there's a list of people that are involved, but endless hours for the staffing and making sure we're meaning the accommodation for the staff that need it. Because there are truly accommodations that need to be made. And when I go through that list of the underlying medical conditions, that's where we start. But yeah, staff have an opportunity to teach online and then we use volunteers. You know, there were volunteers. And then recently, we just posted four online positions because through everything else, that wasn't filled. So then people applied for that within our district. So there, there are teachers that have had the opportunity. Maybe they didn't have an underlying medical condition, but they were a volunteer. Or let's say a school used their volunteer slots already and then we posted positions that people can apply for too. So we've done, you know, we're complete with, uh, Parshewett Elementary, we're just waiting for one position to be filled. The middle school in good place and right now we're having deep conversations with the high school on, on what that looks like. Because of the offerings are a little different. I can go on for an hour, but I'll stop there. But, uh, y- yeah, there, there's a HR process that we used to, uh, you know, fill, fill, fill the online positions. Plus the other thing too, Lori, the thing I would say is we work with supervisors too. So is there a program that you have that necessarily isn't teaching online, but within your school, you're, you're promoting that online, like our dual language schools? So working with, 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 with the principal, making sure that a teacher that needed accommodations has that. So it's a whole lot of hands on deck to provide support for our staff.
Yeah, thank you. That's the answer I wanted to hear. So that's great. Anybody else have any questions? Uh, Stu?
Bill, would you go back in your slides to the one that's titled vulnerable populations? Um, the fourth bullet down, should that be low-income adults? Because children aren't Thompson School District employees. I can't hear him.
Uh, he's, you're muted, Bill. You're muted, Bill.
Stu, man, I had a great explanation of what I just said, so hopefully that made sense. No, but, uh, so, so the low-income children is what it's defined at. I- it's not low-income employees. So instead of taking that, I wanted to kind of put that in there ju- just so the board can see what a vulnerable population would be. Because at times you just think about the employee, but it's not so much about the employee. I- it's, it's about the students too. Right? Because the uninsured, right? Because in our district, you know, employees are insured, right? Right? Because we provide that.
So this, so this particular one is kind of in addition to the other members of the vul- vulnerable population. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So basically I'm just trying to educate everyone on vulnerable populations because they think it's just older adults, right? And, and it's not because, you know, it's like this. And there's like four, four other things on there that I didn't put on there because it'd get a little confusing. But it seems like the bullet I left in there was confusing too.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. You guys are doing good work. All right. More policies. Um, so we've got a series of policies now. Are these all going to be presented by?
Laurie, isn't there something about PD?
Yeah, we have a professional.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I'm skipping one. You're right. Thank you. 8.5 professional development update. That's why Melissa's on there. Go ahead, Melissa.
So, uh, you know, PD falls on HR side. I'd just like to kind of introduce her and get into, you know, the purpose of provide the Board of Education with an updated professional development, direction, activity, impact within the Thompson School District. It falls into STRIVE 2025 Human Talent, number three. And the bullet is ensure continuous improvement and growth mindset. So at this time, I'm honored to introduce Dr. Melissa Snyder, our PD Director.
Good evening, Madam President and Dr. Schaefer and members of the board. Uh, tonight I am pleased to present to you an update on PD, our activities, our direction, and the impact of it, and a few celebrations too. So let me go ahead and present. All right. Is everybody seeing that? I'm not hearing a response. Okay.
Yes, I see it.
Okay, wonderful. Um, so I wanted to just kind of start off by saying, number one, thank you, uh, to the people who are, were so generous to give us the BON project. Uh, we have a beautiful professional development room, um, in the admin building that as soon as we're all back together, I cannot wait to see that put to its use. So it's, it's absolutely beautiful and thank you for that. Um, so the, kind of the purpose of my presentation is to be able to share with you kind of what has happened in the world of PD in the last year in Thompson School District. And, um, starting off with just some grounding principles of, um, how we do PD here in Thompson, very, very similar to how we do education for our kids. Uh, we use research-based approaches to developing PD content as well as tracking its impact. Uh, we align ourselves with the standards for professional learning that are put out by Learning Forward. Learning Forward is an internationally known education organization that does research around the best kind of professional learning. Um, they have a whole entire set of standards, uh, that have been proven to get results with kids and that is what we're all about. So we align ourselves with the very best there. Um, also, we want equitable access to PD for all of our employee groups. So that is something that we strive for as well. And then we also want to recognize the different PD types, uh, that we, we do have and that we are responsible for delivering. Um, so not all PD is sitting and, and, uh, developing new lesson plans or assessments, but sometimes it's truly an orientation to our school district and induction and welcome to your career. Um, sometimes it's trainings. We've had a lot of trainings in the last few months where people needed some new skillsets to adjust with what was going on in education. Um, and then professional learning as well, where it's a deeper dive into practices. So in this past year, we've really shaped the picture, uh, the big picture of PD and TSD. We had a, um, a small task force that was representative of all employee groups that developed mission and vision statements for professional development in TSD. Um, those can be viewed on the very front page of our professional development website, which is linked in your memo tonight, um, so you can be able to read those. But those are very closely aligned with our district, um, mission and vision as well. We just have more of an adult learning lens to them. Um, all of our course approvals now are tied to STRIVE 2025. Like I said, we have a PD website now that has been launched that became a vehicle for, um, delivering some very, very pertinent information during our shutdown, uh, starting in March. Uh, we have conducted a needs assessment for all employee groups around direction of PD and their needs. Um, we also see that, uh, PD is a vehicle for crucial training needs during remote work time. That, that definitely came to be as, uh, we collaborated with ITS, Learning Services, to provide folks with crucial, uh, remote work training as well as online teaching and learning. And then, um, we also have shaped our induction programs in our ELPD pathway to, uh, as, as professional development that folks can get free of charge, that allow us to, uh, maintain their certificates and they don't need to pay another dime. If they don't want to go, um, and pay college tuition or go to conferences, they, um, are entitled to come to our PD as well. So kind of like if somebody asked me, what are the major functions of PD and TSD? And what are we really responsible for? New teacher orientation is a big one. Um, our induction programs from licensed staff induction, APT orientation, APT induction, um, the mentor program, the training for new APT and licensed staff mentors, that's been huge. Um, classified staff PD, course alignment to strive 2025 and being able to, um, track our progress and our impact and making sure we're on target to be able to reach our goals in '25. And education camp as well. And if you need a reminder on what education camp is, it's those four non-student days in our work calendar, um, where teachers have the choice to be able to work on things, you know, maybe in their classrooms um, or to attend PD. And so, uh, we're responsible for making sure that there's some options there for them as well. Now for the fun part, um, I wanted to share with you just some, some impact in the past year of PD and TSD. And so most recently, we had our new teacher orientation successfully delivered online. Um, and a huge shout out to the five divisions that collaborated, um, in creating a massive Google Classroom with, um, content and videos, um, and an open office hours and personal time for our new teachers. While we would have loved to have welcomed them in, uh, open arms on the red carpet ceremony over at Thompson Valley High School in person, um, we did the best that we could to be able to offer three full days of, of a virtual orientation, which was very well received. Um, staff retention, while I know that there's a lot of factors that go into why staff stay, um, I can't help but think of our mentoring program, uh, for our APT leaders. Last year, it was the first year that we had such a thing. Um, and we have, uh, we had, we had about three times as many mentors and mentees last year in the APT leadership than we do this year. We had a lot of people stay, so it, that's really awesome. Um, induction will be personalized and converted to online this year with some, uh, some feedback from last year around what is going to be relevant to people. Um, another celebration is that this past year in 1920, we had a five-fold increase in teachers who chose on their ed camp days to actually attend PD, uh, and, and spend their entire day with us, uh, choosing some things that they wanted to do to improve themselves and grow professionally. So, um, five-fold increase in that from the year before. Um, and then our, our, uh, design of the ELPD pathway, which is the courses that teachers will need, uh, to be able to renew their licenses here in about the next five years. Uh, it's 45 clock hours of English Language Learner Professional Development. Uh, the old name was Culturally Linguistically Diverse Students. They, the CDE has changed their name. Um, and this is a, a track that we offer to teachers free of charge. Um, and it has consistently filled its seats. We have several hundred teachers now who have gone through this pathway that we have to offer. Uh, more of our celebrations is that in classified staff, just recently, and, uh, classified staff in HR, Business Services, Communications and Operations, so we're talking a lot of people, um, were able to receive 32 hours of professional development through the CARES Act training. Uh, we were able to train classified staff in those departments, uh, in Google Meet and in Google Classroom PD. So it was just amazing because many of them, the light bulbs went on and they had new ideas for how they were going to conduct their work and reach out to, um, others during a time when we're contactless. Um, also, higher quality instruction with PD instructor training modules. I have done this in collaboration with Learning Services to be able to up the ante on what we're offering our, um, adult learners and be able to model best practices on online instruction as well. And then lastly, I wanted to just share a quick celebration around what our most popular class was this summer, uh, offered. And it was our STRIVE 2025-based independent study course. We had over 160 teachers sign up for that course. And I, I do want to show you a little bit of their work because what they were able to do is take a, a problem of practice of their own, really, really dig deep and study, uh, their own practices, their own alignment to the educational, uh, performance rubrics for teachers. Um, how they felt their practices would be observed, uh, what they thought their practice would impact as far as student outcomes, and design something that they could use this next year. And so I have a couple of examples of what came out of that. Um, this, uh, picture here, the two pictures over on the right-hand side um, are the, from the same teacher who decided to develop an interactive virtual math journal. And, um, in looking through this, the amount of, uh, standards-based curriculum, the, uh, leaders of their own learning work that we have done and, and allowing kids to really own their learning and track their own data, how they're doing on iReady, um, the links to, uh, being able to meet with teachers on this, in this interactive journal. Um, the ability for kids to still do paper and pencil math notebook work and be able to take a picture of it and upload it into this journal and interact with their teacher and other classmates. Fascinating. And this person spent their summer independent study doing this and aligning this sort of work and practice with STRIVE 2025. So very impressive. Um, and then over on the left in the corner, uh, from an early childhood teacher doing a, a book study in a reflective journal. This is just the beginning of it, but how to talk so little kids will listen is, and as, uh, you can see, she, uh, begins it by aligning which parts of the educator effectiveness rubric that she hopes to impact in her own personal performance. So a couple of things I just wanted to share with you on the independent study piece and our professional development offerings. This was such a, a neat thing this summer. Um, and then a few things that people have said, employee responses to PD. We love getting feedback. We love asking folks how things went, what we can do better, uh, what they liked. Here's some things they liked. Uh, so this is the first one. Um, an instructional para pro, so a classified employee, uh, who is welcome to our, uh, relicensing certification PD. She says, "Thank you for the opportunity to keep my teaching license up to date for free." So our substitutes, anybody, uh, is an employee of TSD, has the benefit of being able to attend our professional development, especially many of us who, um, have a teaching license that we'd like to maintain. Another one, I am so excited to learn how to use Google Classroom for new employee orientation during COVID. I have so many ideas. This came from one of our own HR classified employees who is now taking Google Classroom and run with it for, uh, new employee orientation and onboarding. And her ideas to just continue, uh, they just gain momentum. Another one, a principal from last year, brand new. "I appreciated that TSD took the time to create something for APT. That's usually a forgotten group. My mentor program was great. I feel very connected to TSD." And then lastly, straight, uh, from the mouth of one of our brand new teachers, "Wow, this is great. You've definitely demonstrated how learning can be virtual and interactive through all of the helpful sessions." So I wanted to share those quotes with you all and let you know that we're getting the feedback that we had hoped, um, with some of the things that we've done in the past year with PD and continue to want to improve, which, which leads me to my last slide and looking ahead. So, um, while we maintain flexibility during such a changing time in education, um, these are for sure some, some, uh, pillars that we want to lean on and, and move forward for next year. And, uh, one of them is being able to analyze our PD according to STRIVE 2025 goals and its impact. Now that we have our courses all aligned with STRIVE 2025 and we're tracking, uh, changes in practices and changes in student outcomes or performance at work. Um, it will be, uh, once enough data is collected, it will be, um, really neat to be able to report to you a year from now and say where folks actually had their focus, uh, where we saw an impact and what things that we need to do to build, to fill any gaps. Um, substitute teacher PD is going to be huge, as you can imagine, going into this fall. We've already begun creating, uh, online learning for our substitutes so that they can step in at a moment's notice. And, uh, students can, uh, not have their learning interrupted. So, um, we're working very hard on that right now. Um, also, continued collaboration with Learning Services and ITS to design PD for changing education conditions. This already happened in the spring, um, where the PD website really did become kind of a hub for a lot of departments, um, to be able to offer trainings and links to helpful things for teachers and could not have done it without the collaboration between divisions and departments. Uh, we want to continue to increase our PD opportunities for classified staff and are very proud to do so. Um, and lastly, we want to continue to train quality instructors, especially, uh, our instructors who have never offered PD, uh, other than face-to-face, who are now making a transition in their own teaching world, um, for teaching adults, uh, virtually and online. So we're looking at those best practices and following, um, some of the latest, uh, research around what works and, um, some tips like that. So with that, I want to just say thank you so much for the, uh, opportunity to present to you tonight. And what questions do you have for me?
Laurie? Laurie?
Barb, why don't you go ahead? Go ahead and ask a question, comment, and then I will.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to say, Melissa, that, um, I have totally explored your PD website because when the teachers went back to school on the sixth and seventh or whatever, when the teachers went back to school on the sixth and seventh or whatever, you know, during this whole time, I'm by myself almost every day, and I run out of things I'm kind of entertained with. So I went and went through all of the classes, and I did all of the sites, and I just dug into that for that first four or five days when the teachers were back. And I am so impressed, and I'm just so grateful that we finally have something to offer. And it's wonderful. So work.
Thank you so much. Stu?
I certainly agree with what Barb said, and hats off to Melissa and to your department for what you're doing for APT classified and substitutes. I think we all, when we think of professional development, we think of what teachers do to get ready to go back to the classroom or to enhance their skills. But to know that you're concentrating efforts on those three employee groups that could be forgotten and aren't being forgotten, so thank you on behalf of them for what you're providing them.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, I just want to echo the thanks everybody else has given. This has been sort of like a little bit of an empty hole in the district, the professional development, so it's great to see it, to have a dedicated employee and a dedicated head on this now, and it's very exciting. I might even go on the website, Barb, and do some of those. They sound like a lot of fun. Please do.
I was so impressed. I felt like I really got a handle, you know, I didn't really use Google till we started doing the hangout, our meetings during it, and now I feel like there's a lot I could use, even as I teach over at...
With your students, yeah. Yeah. And it's always nice to know as a parent, too, like how that Google Classroom thing works, because, you know, you trust your kid, they come home and say, "Ah, it's Google Classroom, Mom." It's like, okay. But yeah, thank you. Great job. And great work. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right. Now we go to the rest of these policies, and they're not really related. Dawn, are you going to present them? So let's just do one, let's just do them one by one, and I don't anticipate a lot of questions on these, but who knows?
I agree. I'm hopeful, too. Actually, there is a thread here with all of these policies. All these policies do have something to do with health and safety, and so it does have a relationship to health and safety and to some degree COVID, too. So some specifically call it COVID, and other are more the health or the safety for staff and students. So the first one, let's go with policy EBBA, which is handling bodily, handling body fluids. And let me share my screen. And where is it? There it is. So this policy has, is a policy, and in its current form, we have a policy and an exhibit. And as we were reviewing this with the CASB recommendations, as well as with legal counsel, you'll notice that in the policy, the actual policy change, legal is recommending that we change the name of it to align with what the heading of most policies for policy EBBA, which is to change it from handling bodily fluids and substances to prevention of disease and infection transmission, as that's the policy name, and then in parentheses, handling body fluids and substances. So that's, that's kind of one of the big ones. And the other then addition there is, is to add a little bit of language to ensure that we are addressing that we have a sanitary environment and that we have established routines. All of that used to, I mean, all of that shows up in the exhibit or the regulation, but to not have it in the policy, that's pretty important to have it there. So those are the, those are the pieces to that, fairly straightforward, I believe. And then I know there were some questions on pulling apart the existing EBBE. And so the recommendation is that we update this exhibit to pull out language that CASB and legal counsel considers regulatory, and then retain the language that's more procedural as an exhibit. And so when you look at policy EBBA-E, everything that you see as a strike through is now in new policy EBBAR, which is called transmission, or prevention of infections, disease, infection, transmission, handling body, I want to say bodily every time, body fluids and substances. And then the remaining language is best practice, and we can update it very easily as needed as an exhibit, much like the example of the people's names in the, in the policy around the, in policy AC and one of those exhibits, it would be the same kind of thing. If we need to change something because of a practice, it will come before the board, and the board can decide to vote on it or not if it's, if it's simply how we do practice. So be happy to put up the policies if you would like to see them, but there, we're asking that we would bring these back then at your September 2 meeting for approval.
Anybody want to see the actual policy on this one, or are we okay with just the overview? I think we're good. Questions, Stu and then Mark. Stu, first.
Right. I do have a question. Dawn, there were nine paragraphs in EBBA-E that have been eliminated, and I just want to make sure that the essential content in those is now addressed in a handful of numbered items. So nine paragraphs were replaced by, I think, maybe four sentences, and we certainly don't need to go through them one by one, but I just want to make sure that someone has made sure that, that the key points in those nine paragraphs are all included, so.
They are, Stu. And so if you, if you do a side-by-side, they're there. Let me go ahead and share this tab. So this is policy EBBE, and this is as it is. So we would be removing everything that is, is in red line, and let me pull up EBBR, because it's very similar. So you see the same kind of, it's just formatted differently. And for example, instead of the way they did their table, we put it in an actual table because things were not sequenced. Oh, I'm not here, I'm thinking I'm sharing. So it's, what was in a table that had these weird tabs and things in it, we just put it in an actual table. So it is cross-referenced, everything that was there is here that's essential.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on this one? Mark Seder.
So I just wanted to clarify, because I'm not sure if I heard it right. So the deleted content that came out of the exhibit EBBA-E was moved into EBBA-R, and that's a regulation? EBBA-R is a regulation, so it was moved from the exhibit to the regulation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Perfect.
All right. Are we good on this one? We can move on to the next one? Okay. So that takes us to first reading on policy EBCD, emergency closings.
Thank you. And we spoke a little bit about this in the policy IC/ICA. You gave a great example, President Visor Ward, about a possibility when we may have to close school and want and need to use remote learning. So this is to update this policy to add that specific language for potential use of remote instruction during a school closure or cancellation. It does specifically call out a public health emergency, which the previous version of the policy did not address, and this really would allow our district to go into remote learning for any reason that the district or a school would need to be closed. Legal counsel also on this one recommends changing the name to align with CASB naming convention. It's currently titled emergency closings, and the recommendation would be to change that to school closings and cancellations, because sometimes we cancel school versus we close school.
All right. Next one is item 8.8, first reading policy JH/JHB/JHBA, school attendance.
Thank you. So this one is around students' absences and excuses and attendance as well. One of the things is, we were looking at this, we first were looking at it to see if we needed to change it related to the remote learning attendance and how we would do that. We decided that it lived maybe a little bit more hand-in-hand in policy IC/ICA. As we were doing that review, then we noticed a few other things. So it was like, well, let's take the opportunity to go ahead and adjust this one. One of them, the one change at the top is that it previously said that the annual report was due in the, you know, at a specific time, and our recommendation is that change that there will be an annual report, and that it allows more flexibility, because I believe it was, you know, in the last quarter, and we may not have final data there for quarter. So it may actually be a lag and make more sense to do the data when it's, when we have it all compiled. So wanted to have that opportunity if the board approves. And then it's, the rest of it is to align our practice with the policy in that it's really the district that develops the policy and procedures for absences and tardies, rather than having each individual school create their own absence and tardy policy. So we have a very set, you know, number of absences that are unexcused, excused, et cetera. So we wouldn't put that on schools directly. And then there was one statement that was very specific about middle school and how, what, how to encourage attendance, and it called out middle school, but didn't, called out elementary? It called out middle school, but didn't say anything about high school. So made that change, that made that to be secondary versus middle school only.
Next, Dawn, questions on this one? All right. That brings us to item 8.9, first reading of policy JLCC/JLCCA, communicable diseases.
Yes, this policy lives in the student section, and so this is similar to EBBA. EBA is broad, this one is specific to students, and so it adds additional language to include more communicable diseases, and it specifically adds COVID-19. It puts practice into policy about our notification process, and also that our collaboration with, when we have anything that's a communicable disease, our collaboration with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and our local public health agencies. It also removes language that is covered in the new inserted text, so we were able to kind of change some things. And then there's also a regulation that goes with this that also includes some of the deleted text. So it was redundant.
Questions? Just to clarify, Dawn, you're saying there's a regulation that already exists that already has some of this language in it, so we're taking out. Okay.
That is correct. It's a duplication, and most of the relevant information that is deleted is included in what we, what we revised above.
Good. All right. Moving on to the last one, number 8.10, first reading of policy KI, visitors and guests to schools.
Yes. In this one, the update here is to add a statement about loitering at school and to include that law enforcement might be called to enforce this policy, and also to specifically add the word health as far as student and staff health and safety, so that as a reason that a visitor might be denied access to the school, and, you know, especially given where we are right now, if we can't allow a visitor in the building because of protocols that we have in place, that addition of the word health there is important. We also added some additional cross-references to policies. I did notice that we have not updated the gender language in this one. We will do that. There's a reference to his or her designee. We will make that change when it comes back to you at your September 2 meeting.
Thanks. I have one quick question on this, and I might answer it myself in the question. I was wondering about volunteers as opposed to visitors and guests, but then I see we've got KJ.
Correct. That is correct. We have a separate volunteer policy.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody? All right. So this whole set of policies, as well as the other set of policies, are all going to come back September 2, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Any final questions on these policies before I let Dawn go? All right. I have let Dawn go. Thank you. Thanks, Dawn. That brings us to the end of the printed agenda. There are no written reports this time. Items and requests for information. Reminder, we have study session tomorrow night, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I did not print off the agenda. Dr. Schaefer, can you remind me the four items, please?
Yes, absolutely. So tomorrow, working session, we have four items. In this order, we will do an update on mascot or mascot discussion, followed by student discipline policies. And we've also forwarded to the board some advanced reading and some work for you to take a look at, which will really help aid in our discussion and kind of keep it focused. We'll then give you an update on our fall launch for 2020-21. And finally, board-focused for the school year will be the fourth topic. So four excellent topics at about 45 minutes each. And one quick reminder that we have a tentative date and time, so we've sent, if you check your email, you'll take a look at, for, to provide you with a legal update. If that date and time will work, and again, it's in your email, let us know, and then we will notice that as a special meeting, so that'll be early next week. And we'll right now target around 90 minutes for that meeting, which should give us ample time with our attorney.
Anything else? I know this was a long one. Thank you, guys. We, you know, we put off that first set of policies last time around because we were, I can't remember what the reason was now, but the last meeting, I think, because we were switching to, we had an update on remote learning or something. I can't remember what it was. So anyway, so thank you for sitting through all those. I know it was a lot. Thank you to the staff for hanging around with us till 10 o'clock at night, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and I will see you all tomorrow at 5:00 p.m.